Oh, good. You've got your almost Christmas sweater on.
Yeah, almost. It's just the novelty of a nice big turtleneck.
Okay, all right. I would like to call the meeting to order for the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners on December 21st, 2022. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its defense, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see. We didn't receive any blue forms sent. No one's going to...
I don't, we don't have any here.
Okay, all right. We're good. We do have, we did receive an email this last evening at 9:07 regarding the planning commission, which is on our agenda. So that was sent to the commissioners. Are there, is there anyone with a raised hand? No one? Stephanie? Okay, thank you. All right, so, yes. Yes, welcome to the last meeting of the year of 2022 for the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners. We will, we will be starting up again, what is it, January 4th? So consent agenda.
I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Any further discussion?
So just acknowledging that Newbury Estates Special Road District has just had some phone calls with the, two of the board people yesterday, so want to help them through being professional and show them support, but, you know, the appointment is appropriate for that road district. So just acknowledging that I've been talking to some of them.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Devon?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. First action item is a presentation from CASA. Heather, thank you so much for joining us.
Hello, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here with you today. Thank you for having me. So I am here to talk to you about CASA, which is Board, which stands for Court Appointed Special Advocates, CASA of Central Oregon. And I want to thank the Board of County Commissioners for your consistent support to advocate for children in foster care here in Deschutes County. I'm working the technology.
Hmm, you got it.
And just to give a bit of context, I just want to point out that today in Deschutes County, there are 215 children in foster care, and they are currently served by, excuse me, 104 CASA volunteers. What this means is that there are currently 37 children who are waiting for a CASA. This is particularly important because these are children who are in foster care because they have been removed from their homes due to abuse and neglect. And the court has found that they are in an imminent threat of harm if they stay in their homes. What this looks like is that these children have been victims of physical abuse, sexual abuse. They've been exposed to domestic violence. They've been exposed to illegal substances and unsafe individuals. When they come into care, their basic needs have often been neglected, and so the state becomes their, becomes their parent and essentially, and that's a very challenging place for a child to be. And that is why our organization is here, because when a child's in foster care, they're in safe, they're safe, but that it's still a challenging place for them to grow up. So our organization recruits, trains, and supports volunteers to serve as court-appointed special advocates, and that is that they are advocates on behalf of the child during their time in foster care. We serve children in Deschutes and Jefferson County, and the majority of the children that we serve come from here in Deschutes County.
Would you say like 85%?
A 75%.
75%?
Our advocates are designed, are assigned directly by the judge. So what that looks like is when an advocate is available, they are assigned to serve a child or a sibling group, get to know everybody in that child's life, and advocate for that child in court and anywhere else that child deserves advocacy. Our advocates become what we say the champion, cheerleader, and chief of staff for that child. And we insert that, we make sure that their needs are met during their time in care. And I have kind of a gnarly graph to show you, but the reason that I wanted to show the, this today, and you've seen these numbers in our quarterly report, is the blue line represents the number of children in foster care. And you may be hearing things from the state about how we've seen a decrease in the number of children in foster care in the state of Oregon. That is not true here in Deschutes County. From 2019 through to today, we've seen an increase in the number of children in care that sort of peaked right there during the pandemic. We're still above pre-pandemic numbers of children in foster care. So I just want to raise this as a strong need that is in our community and is a growing need despite the fact that that is different than what we see statewide. The second bar on there is the orange bar, and that is the number of, that is the number of children who are served by a CASA volunteer. And so that's another one that I want to bring your attention to, that consistently here in Deschutes County, we serve between 85 and 90% of children with a CASA volunteer. And so that is with the support of the Deschutes County Board of County Commissioners. And I want to particularly point that out for you because the state average for number of children in foster care served by a CASA is 50%. We are well above the state average. We are one of the higher-performing counties of serving children in foster care with an advocate. Like I said, consistently between 85 and 90%. And I want to point that out and thank you for it. What I also want to do is give some, oh, what did I just do there? Is do some context of why this is important. What we also see here in Deschutes County or Central Oregon as a whole, is that when a child's in foster care, they'll have an average of four different caseworkers during their time in care. They'll have an average, they'll live in an average of three different foster homes, and they'll be in care for an average of two years. That's a lot of turmoil and change in a child's life. That's a lot of different adults coming into their life and a lot of things that are happening to that child, and the child's needs are lost. When they have a CASA volunteer, we want to make it our job that they have one CASA, one volunteer during their time in care, so that they do have that one consistent adult who can advocate for their needs. And this is important because when a child's in care, and I know several, I know you know about this because you care about it, but I think it's worth sharing, is that for that 85%, 90% of children in care, a child with a CASA is more likely to fare better during their time in care. They move into a safe and permanent home more quickly. They are more likely to succeed in school. What that looks like is that their grades are higher, they're more likely to graduate, and they're less likely to be expelled. There, if, when they leave foster care, they're less likely to come back into care, so they're more likely to stay in permanency once they, once they leave. And during their time in care, they're more likely to be connected to services. I talked about some of the issues that bring a child into care. Oftentimes, these children have unmet medical needs, occupational therapy, physical therapy, unmet dental needs, mental health needs. And when a child has a CASA, they're more likely to be connected to the services that they need to really be able to heal and thrive in the future. So what are we, what are we looking for? So if we, you picture back to that graph, the graph, there's that gap of the number of children who aren't yet served by a CASA. And as I've talked about, all children deserve an advocate because it helps them fare better during care. The reason we're not serving 100% of children is because we don't have the volunteers needed. So I am here to let you know how things are doing, but also to make a request for volunteers in the community. And that is that we are actively looking for volunteers to serve as advocates for children in foster care. We, a CASA is an ordinary person who does extraordinary things for a child. That this looks like you need to be an adult over the age of 21. You need to pass a background check, and you need to be willing to drive to visit the child at least once a month. We offer a 40-hour training, and we do ask for a two-year commitment because we do want an adult who's able to be that consistent, who's able to be consistent for a child. If somebody is interested in becoming a volunteer, we have trainings that start in January. We have two trainings, one which will be in person in Bend, and one which will be online that will start the last week of January. And if any of you know of somebody who is interested, or if anyone who is listening to this meeting is interested in learning more, they can go to our website at casaoofcentraloregon.org. And that's all. Yes, Commissioner Devon?
So if you happen to live in the Tumalo area, could you, could you be a CASA?
You absolutely could.
Okay.
And we'd love to have more volunteers from Tumalo.
So this is a call to the community, though. Anybody and everybody to be able to learn about it, figure out if it's a good fit for you personally, learn about how to get engaged and be certified, and then make a couple of your commitment.
That is exactly, yes, absolutely.
Wonderful.
Make a difference in the life of a child.
Well, it's good to know that our numbers are way past that 50% statewide, but we always have more work to do. Get that next 10%. Thank you.
Yeah, Heather, thank, thank you and the CASA organization for the work that you do on behalf of these incredibly vulnerable members of our community. And you could see in the statistics that you shared with us that, that, you know, positive relationships and interventions in a, in a, in a young person's life at this point could keep them from a whole bunch of bad outcomes later in their life. So I, I hope that members of our community are hearing your call for additional CASA volunteers and responding. And I'll do what I can to help publicize that as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Chang.
So Heather, just to repeat, the training, you have one in person in Bend. Now, is that a 40-hour training in one week?
No, it's a 40-hour training over about eight weeks.
Okay, 40 hours over eight, okay. And then what about the online, then?
The online training will be on, the online training will be on Tuesday evening, starting January 24th, from 5:00 to 8:30.
5:00 to 8:30.
And the in-person training will be in Bend on, starting January 26th, on Thursday afternoons from 2:00 to 3:30.
Right. So if anybody's wondering what they're going to do next year with their free time, I'm really glad that you came in today because I, you see the numbers, even if, though, you know, we're better than a lot of other counties, we, there's still children out there that really do need that continuity, consistency, and if we can find more volunteers with a two-year commitment, that's wonderful. So I thank you so much. Are you going to give us that handout? Are you going to, so we can have it for our record?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thanks for coming in today. I hope, I hope you get lots of emails and people realizing that this is a really, it's a great program and, and you can make a difference, one child at a time, and give that child continuity. So thanks.
Thank you.
And Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas. Thank you.
There you go. Even applause.
All right, we have the next item, item number nine. Okay, let's see. Chris Doty. And Bob Townsend. Oh, Bob, you're in the room, too.
Mm-hmm.
Hey, I heard your team's doing really well.
So far, so good.
Okay, you can, and you still have your voice. Still have your voice.
Spite the coach.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you. I think he's supposed to say, "Don't jinx me."
Yeah, there you go. Don't, yeah.
Okay, I won't jinx you.
So, good morning, Board. Chris Doty with the Road Department, for the record. Beside me, Robert "Bob" Townsend from ODOT. Now, we're here to present a funding contribution agreement with the county in ODOT.
I think the wrong thing is on the screen. It says the Tumalo Water.
Oh, yeah, with it. That's coming up next.
Okay.
Everyone excited just yet.
Thank you, Stephanie.
I was here to present a funding contribution agreement with ODOT for improvements to the intersection of US 20 and Locust and Sisters. This agreement stems from a prior commitment Deschutes County had to support a $1 million contribution as a component of the City of Sisters Raise Grant application, which they applied for probably over a year ago, to construct that roundabout at US 20 and Locust. The roundabout would be a great project for the community, really kind of bookend the community with roundabouts and safe access to the highway and really tie into that Barclay alternative route, and eventually, of course, into the, to the county's Camp Polk and Wilt Road corridor. The county contribution's long been discussed because of the amount of development in the rural area on that Camp Polk and Wilt Road corridor, probably rivals the amount of development in the City of Sisters. And so the need for good access for those rural residents to Highway 20 is paramount. And that's, that's a big, big part of our involvement and our long-term discussion there. While the city was not successful in that grant application, ODOT was able to accommodate this project in their enhanced program, which contains limited funds for things, for projects of this nature. And this is just yet another example of where we, where local government, Deschutes County, where we've been very successful in contributing to ODOT projects to leverage state investment. And in this agreement, we're giving $1 million. Additionally, ODOT will be contributing $5 million to this project and delivering the project, and the City of Sisters, 1.25 million. So again, just a nice collaboration and partnership between the city, county, and state to bring this to you today. A project scheduled for construction in 2024. Bob's here to answer any other questions you may have about that. And I believe there was a sketch of the, how it would look in the agreement that you have in your packet. So, any questions?
The mics are on, and then the other one, it's just in case you were going to cough, you can turn it off for a moment. That's what that button's for.
Okay. I just wanted to add, or Bob Townsend, ODOT area manager, just thank you, of course. And as Chris mentioned, the leverage opportunities, this is just another example of our partnership between ODOT and Deschutes County. The enhanced funds, the $5 million that ODOT received were out of a competitive bucket of $65 million statewide. We would not have received that $5 million if we didn't show leverage dollars from Deschutes County and the City of Sisters. So really, we've been struggling to find a funding mechanism for this project. If we were to fully fund it, and, and with the support of the county and the city, that's the reason we got it. I can't emphasize that enough. And it's similar to Ward Hamby and some of these other projects, Tumalo, Old Ben Redmond, North Corridor, all of these projects where we get a financial contribution from the local jurisdiction helps us get over the top in our application packets for these, these flexible funding buckets. So again, just want to, want to thank you and, and just highlight the ongoing partnership we've had and how important it is to us and our, our local communities.
So this is going to be the roundabout corridor, once you get on the one side of Sisters all the way into Bend. And just acknowledging, this will be built for large trucks and large freight also, correct?
Correct. It'll contain the same type of bypass, or internal bypass that's at the Barclay Roundabout.
Yeah, great.
So will it start in spring of '24 and finish?
Yeah, the goal is to, it, it'll bid late this year, and similar to the, the Barclay Roundabout, that we'd start construction in January, February, and have it predominantly finished by Memorial Day before tourism hits up. I mean, there'll be some completion, or some small items needing to be completed after the fact, but the goal is to have it complete by, and operational by Memorial Day of 2024.
Well, is, pardon me?
This is a, I, I think this is a great example of a project, of a partnership in a project that benefits county residents who live in the unincorporated area, city residents who live in Sisters, and, and the people of the state of Oregon. So I'm, I'm really excited that the, the county can play a role in this project in partnership with the city and state.
So for flow ideas, is, I'm kind of stuck on the truck, truck thing, but would, would truck traffic go around town, kind of the backside now, or would they go right down the middle?
Yeah, I mean, it's a very delicate conversation with the City of Sisters because certainly they want certain vehicles to use the alternate route, but not other vehicles that may stop and spend money in Sisters. So we'll have a, a complicated conversation over the next year about how it's signed. There's enforcement possibilities if you do a truck route, and so that'll be a delicate conversation. But the main thing is, you know, obviously traveling through the area, you know when to use the alternate route, when you don't want to wait in town, and that's probably the best, that, that would be ODOT's preference, is that it's there, it's signed, if people choose to use it, but not as an enforcement that they have to use it.
It really does work, the alternate route.
Yeah, most definitely.
Except for having, yeah, except for this southern.
Yeah, this will complete that for sure, yeah.
Great. Well, it's exciting to be able to have these resources to empower these projects proceed, so I'm very much supportive.
I guess, I guess my one last question. So there was, for many roundabout projects that have been in discussion on, you know, in that, in that Sisters to Bend, you know, Sisters through Tumalo to Bend corridor, in, in the last couple of years, there has been concern at that freight mobility consortium. And I, you know, Commissioner Devon was asking about whether this would be configured, you know, for freight. And do we, just kind of, politically, do we feel like that has kind of settled down now, and people are, are comfortable with this string of roundabouts that we're going to see along Highway 20?
Interesting choice of words there. What I would say is certainly, the trucking industry is comfortable that we've sized the roundabouts correctly and that they can get the necessary loads through, and that they're not the pinch point they once were perceived at. The next, the next question out there now is, do trucks have to sit at the roundabouts longer because of the stop and start, and how do we analyze that? There are certain studies being done, and ODOT's partnering one, partnering in one now, analyzing the gaps that are created in roundabouts, and do we need to install, not signals, but they would be like a signal to allow trucks more room to get into the roundabout as it reaches capacity. So certainly, that's the next step in this review, but certainly the sizing component, we've, we've certainly satisfied the trucking industry on those. We, we definitely have mastered how to make them big enough and include the bypass when necessary. So that's one hurdle down. Now we'll see about the next ones that are introduced.
Yeah. Thank you.
Don't forget people pulling eight horse, horse.
Yes.
Ah, yes. Big horse trailers.
Yeah, I mean, I'm like, oh, they just keep getting bigger.
Sounds like freight to me.
Yeah, well, ponies.
Triple axle trailers. With that, I'll move approval of board signature of document 2022-984, a funding contribution agreement with ODOT for improvements to US 20 at Locust Street.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I'd just like to acknowledge, yeah, the mayor and Sisters last Friday was touting the approval of this project, so now this is one of those parts of funding that wasn't in place till now.
Bless you. No, great. And, yes, Commissioner Devon?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. I think I'll be going through five roundabouts in Bend when I go through Sisters. Or six, because I'll go through it and then through it. Yeah, it's going to be a lot of circles. That's how it works.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Bob. Do we say like break a leg or something like that? What is really good luck?
Basket, Bob?
Good luck.
Like make a lot of baskets.
Thank you.
At least you have your voice. Okay, Chris, you're now on the agenda again.
Okay, yes. So with that, Board, this is the Tumalo wastewater feasibility study discussion. I'd like to invite Susannah Jolter up here.
No, they don't get to talk today on plenty.
And Susannah's with Consor Engineering.
You can send in letters.
Consor was, purchased Murray Smith during the course of this project. Our contract was originally with Murray Smith, so a little bit of a switcheroo there, but same team. And Justin Moeman is trying to get on the Zoom as we speak here. Justin, there he is.
There he is.
He is, he's also with Consor. He's the engineer on this project that provided the, the technical work. So he's available for questions, should you have any. But this is going to be a high-level presentation that hopefully doesn't get down into the weeds too much at this speed. All right. So, Board, the purpose of the study was to provide a modern feasibility analysis and roadmap to implement wastewater collection and treatment system in the, in the unincorporated community of Tumalo. A little bit of background, this is the first community feasibility study that, at least that we're aware of, that's taken place in Tumalo. However, there is an existing system that I think we're all familiar with, installed in 2018 to serve residential development on the west side of Highway 20. It's owned by the Tumalo Property Owners Association. It serves that new development behind the Tumalo Feed Company. And then it, it, as it extends up the hill, it's also now serving the businesses, basically, that, that back into that project. So why now? Why are we here talking about this? It's been requested by several commercial property owners, you know, that the county help explore this feasibility of what a system would or could look like in the community of Tumalo. Very similar, obviously, to the work that was being done, that we were doing and helping, at least, in the unincorporated community of Terribon to the north. So I think that kind of spurred, you know, the county's involvement as well. Hey, if you're doing it up there, we'd, we'd love to see what it would look like here. Additionally, there's reports of expensive conditions to meet new and repair permit requirements. And that's primarily with commercial, but all properties as well. Residential properties, you know, can face a $20,000-plus installation cost for a new advanced treatment technology-type system. Todd Cleveland's in the back. Don't, don't let him get away scot-free today. He's sitting back there to, to answer any questions that, that may pop up along those lines. But we'll try to, we'll try to keep you out of this, Todd.
He's in the back of the room, too. You know, he's probably, he's trying to hide back there.
And finally, you know, why now? You know, the TPOA system is, is requesting to serve additional properties in Tumalo on the, the east side of the highway. And so I think it's good to understand, you know, what some of the ramifications of that are. And, and that's, you know, what we've learned through this process, presenting today, that are also contained in the report.
So I'd like to say, I mean, this, this study was funded by the county in support of the community. You know, when there's a statement... of the community. You know, and there's a statement saying several commercial property owners have requested. So we understand there's difference of opinion and different expectations of the community. Thank you for being engaged today. But as I say, the product I think we're gonna see today is what's possible, what would engineering look like, you know, how, how big of a scope is it, what's the footprint? So I'm sure that's coming, but I'm just pointing out that this is just information for everybody to digest.
All right. It is coming.
There we go.
So I wanna talk about what the study is and what it is not. And I think there's been a lot of confusion in the community. You know, you hear the word wastewater sewer system, people immediately think, oh, it's happening, you know. That's not the case, Commissioner, as you just mentioned. This is that feasibility study, floating the balloon, coming up with ideas to what it would look like. And we'll get into some of the specifics of that. But, but what is this? It's a feasibility study. How could Tumalo be sewed? How much will it cost to hook up? And how much will it cost per month? And conversations around wastewater systems, sewer systems, that's the first thing you hear, you know. And so that's the question that we're trying to answer. You know, how much will it cost to hook up? How much will my monthly sewer bill be, you know, for residents or a commercial property owner? And so that's the whole purpose of the feasibility study, is to kinda answer those 30,000-foot questions. It's an evaluation of the potential to expand the existing TPOA system that currently serves that portion of Tumalo west of Highway 20 in that neighborhood. So it's there. It's a nice piece of infrastructure that is serving, basically performing the same function, and really, it's the same system that we're proposing in a lot of regards here. And so it's prudent to then take a look at its, its capacity and ability to expand, and lump that in as a system that needs to be considered as well.
So TPOA's Tumalo Property Owners Association is a private entity, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so just acknowledging.
Yeah, thank you. And then finally, it is, it's a roadmap for implementation by others interested in establishing a sanitary district. And you look no further than the existing water district that's in Tumalo, the Leyla Water District, very similarly formed under the district rules, you know, some 40-plus years ago. And it's been gradually, you know, hooking up and serving Tumalo customers ever since then. In a lot of ways, this is, that's the perfect parallel to how a sewer system could be implemented in this community as well. It's not Deschutes County doing it. It's, it's a district being formed of interested stakeholders and property owners. So what is this study not? That's not a proposal for a sewer system by Deschutes County. No one is saying, hey, Deschutes County wants to do a sewer system. Let's figure out how Deschutes County's gonna do this. No, it's setting the table, basically. It's providing the menu to the community of Tumalo. Only, the only difference is, you don't order something, you have to actually go in the kitchen and cook it, basically, is the analogy here. It is not a study that evaluates how Tumalo will change as a result of, of a sewer system. And I think that's what's gotten the community, you know, engaged quite a bit in this conversation, is the fact that, you know, when people hear, hey, it's a sewer system, they immediately think, eh, it's really gonna change this community. And that, that may or may not, may or may not be true. That's a, that's a function of another planning study. And I would point folks to the, to the Tumalo Community Plan process, that is kinda temporarily on hold as we, we get through this, and we'll restart once we're through this feasibility study. That's the study to talk about, you know, how Tumalo could change based on zoning, based on the goals of the community, so on and so forth. So we didn't take a look at, you know, gosh, we could have four-story buildings and apartment complexes and stuff like that. We did assume a certain level of growth, but that's based on the existing zoning and the existing undeveloped properties that are in place, developing and eventually adding to the system. Finally, it's not an environmental study. What we know about Tumalo is it has very well-draining soils, gravelly. It has a water table that's relatively shallow, that feeds right into the Deschutes River. I think it's a big stretch to assume that all the drain fields in, in Tumalo are feeding into the aquifer, and that's impacting the river. I think that's probably a reasonable assumption, based on what we know about the hydrological connectivity of, of the water and as it relates to the river. But we didn't study that as a part of this. We didn't go out, take samples, to try to support, hey, we're wrecking the river, gotta have a sewer system. That may eventually come, you know, but, but not through the county, at this time at least. Again, this study is just, you know, what would a system look like, such that, you know, we can hand this off to interested stakeholders, to then go about forming potentially a district, and taking the next step towards, you know, providing that level of infrastructure. Okay, got that out of the way. So let's talk a little bit about the, about the feasibility scope, so what we asked the consultant team to do. We asked them to gather and evaluate available existing septic system performance data, a lot of which the county, you know, has. Assemble stakeholders and an advisory committee. You know, we wanna make sure this work is being done in a, in a very open and transparent way. Number three was to actually develop those wastewater collection and treatment system options for consideration. So where would, would the piping go? What type of systems would serve the community best, so on and so forth. And then after doing that, you know, estimate the, the capital costs, how much is it gonna cost to construct, maintenance and operation costs, and develop a rate model. So again, you can answer that question, you know, how much is it gonna cost me upfront? How much is it gonna cost me, you know, per monthly basis? Then, of course, evaluate governance options, you know, that's a big part of this as well. Sanitary district is kinda the obvious path. But again, we have the TPOA system, that's a unique element, right in the heart of the community already. And so that's, that's worthy of some significant review. So here's, here's the advisory group. Some of the folks who are in the, the audience today appreciate all the, the work they put into this and the oversight over the process. I won't list them all by, by names, per se, but what we have here is a very diverse group of, of stakeholders, the property owners. And I can contrast this to Terrebonne a little bit, if you'll allow me. You know, Terrebonne, you know, we had a lot of folks that, you know, were really keen on, on the solution and wanting to drive it. And that's the group right now that's, that's, you know, attempting to form the district. What we have in Tumalo here is, is, you know, much more diverse group, some folks that were really interested in it, some folks that are really nervous about it. And so that made for, you know, kinda some interesting discussions in the first meeting or so. But, you know, here they are, and I thank them for their service. So let's talk a little bit about that existing septic system performance. Many of the original systems in Tumalo were constructed over 50 years ago. Again, Tumalo is a gravelled, coarse-textured soil, you know, in the substrate that allows wastewater to drain relatively easily. Again, to contrast Terrebonne, this is the exact opposite of what we have in Terrebonne. Terrebonne's built on a rock shelf. When your septic system is failing, you see it, you smell it. It is coming up in the bathtub, or it's coming up out of the ground. That's just the way it is. In Tumalo, it's draining so well, you may have a failing septic system. It's not doing its job. You may not even know it. And I won't get into some of what Todd has shared with me, but this appears to be the case, you know, in a few areas. There's failures and costly repairs, and especially in commercial areas, in the existing septic systems. There's an existing business that has basically been boarded up for a number of years now because of its inability to, you know, to solve this problem. And in Tumalo, there are many small lots incapable of accommodating a reserved drain field site. So, you know, typically, you want a half-acre lot minimum to have an existing drain field site in a reserve area. Of course, there's many developed properties that are quite a bit smaller than that. Terms of the study area, you know, we started big and kinda worked our way down to something manageable. The, the septic data chart on the left shows, in a very color-coded fashion, when septic tanks were installed or permitted, and when the repairs may have occurred. This gives you the, the essence of, of the unincorporated boundary of Tumalo. You can see exactly where that density is, and where, you know, a wastewater system makes a lot of sense. Basically, everything in between Highway 20 and the river, you know, very small lot developed properties. But as you get to the east side of the river, or up above the grade on Bailey, you're into these big, large lots. They're technically in the boundary. But because they're, they're large, because they have plenty of area for reserved drain field, capacity and accommodations, we excluded them, you know, from the practical study area to actually phase and consider a wastewater system. And so that's where we ended up with the, the figure on the right that shows the boundary of, of, you know, where a system probably needs to happen in Tumalo at some place. And then along those lines, you know, and along, you know, the same discussions as, as other communities, the commercial area is shown in pink on that, the picture on the right. That, that's a logical phase that could develop. The residential areas are on the, in the yellow area, kinda surrounding that. And then, of course, the Beaver Lane neighborhood is, is up to the north there with that, that cluster of smaller lot, and dense, more dense development. So in terms of, of options, you know, and phasing options, you know, that, the commercial area, you know, I'll turn my phone off here, it's gonna ring. The commercial area has 95 lots, and then it would be a logical phase one. In there, you've got, you know, those acute issues and failures. Commercial properties generate more wastewater, smaller lots, basically a higher strength, harder to treat. You have motivated property owners. So that's why we're here talking about this, is primarily because commercial property owners are having a hard time, you know, meeting, meeting requirements. And it's, you know, it's also a term of sustainability as well. It's, it's not just the opportunity to grow and add commercial properties and development in Tumalo, but just simply serving what you have already is, I think, a concern that these commercial property owners have. And of course, these folks would be most likely to support the sanitary sewer district in the near term. Phase two is those residential areas, 102 lots in that core area, and additional 36 if you include Beaver Lane, kinda up the grade on Klein Falls. Those are older systems in the residential areas. Some are on very small lots, and then can accommodate a reserve area. And of course, these folks are least likely, you know, to support a sanitary district in the near term, or at least have a system up and running, because, you know, the perception is, you know, that their, their systems are working just fine. And some of this, you know, certainly fleshed out initially in the advisory committee conversations. So let's talk a little bit about collection system options. So, you know, we all, I think, familiar with the fact that gravity sewer's the best. You know, it's a, you don't need to pump it, flows downhill, takes care of itself, in terms of ownership and operation costs, gravity's preferred. But it does have a big impact when you're retrofitting it into a community. And on top of that, you know, what we wanna do is get wastewater away from the river. Of course, what's the low point, Tumalo? It's the river. So we'd have to pump it up someplace for disposal and treatment anyways. And so it was, it was considered briefly but dismissed due to cost, impact to the community, bigger pipe, wider trench, deeper trench, and then lack of scalability. You're gonna need to build parts of it before people actually need to hook up to it in some cases. The, the system that, that made the most sense is the STEP system. It's the logical choice here. STEP is the septic tank effluent pump system. With that system, it's just like we've talked about with the system contemplated in Terrebonne. The septic tank is still a part of the equation. It's onsite. It's that initial level of treatment in terms of the solids element. The effluent from that septic tank, instead of going to a drain field for disposal, is pumped via a septic tank pump that pumps into the pressure line that's, that's located out, out in the right-of-way, kinda, kinda shown on this, this graphic here. It has much less impact to the community, again, because you don't need to bury the pipe. It's deep. It's a much smaller diameter pipe, and so it doesn't completely destroy all the streets, and they have to be rebuilt. Has lower capital costs because of that. And, and the best part about it, especially in, in these types of considerations, is that it is scalable. You can, you know, put a backbone in, like for a, a commercial area, per se, and get that basic part in. Then you can add to it, you know, on, on the onesies and twosies lots. You don't have to, to do all the infrastructure at once. It is scalable, and not just beyond, you know, with what we've identified here, but, but other properties could pump into it that aren't even a part of the, of this study area, per se, if, if the capacity exists to treat it. So, very, very scalable, which is good. So talking about the alternatives in terms of, of the systems, there were three options that were developed. That's what we asked the consultant team to hone in on, with one of them being, being, of course, expansion of the TPOA system. Could it be expanded and serve the community? The TPOA system is a STEP system. It's basically identical to what we're proposing for option two, which is a new system that's not affiliated or tied to, to the TPOA system. It's that septic tank pump system to a, pump to an area for treatment and disposal. Option three is a STEP collection system, but instead of pumping it to a disposal and treatment area, you know, it's with all the infrastructure associated with, with treatment and, and draining it, this would pump actually back to the City of Bend's north interceptor line, which is planned for the intersection, eventually to get to the intersection of US 20 and Cooley. And that's about 2.8 miles away. So it's a very reachable destination for pumping wastewater effluent. And, and, you know, again, great parallels to what is being considered in Terrebonne as well. A big difference there, though, is, is Terrebonne's pumped, getting pumped right into the, to the new treatment area, new treatment plant. Here, it's actually pumping into the city's gravity system. And so there's additional, you know, considerations of the impact it would have to the city of Bend's capacity in that gravity system. Of course, it'll eventually work its way to their wastewater treatment plant over by the Bend Airport. Next slide. So a lot of information here. We do have the report that, that really dives into this, but, but basically, this slide provides a tabular assessment of the three options, including capital cost, lifecycle cost, opportunities and challenges, pros and cons, basically, of each, each considered system. The cost estimates do not include the onsite costs associated with your septic tank, the pumping part of it. Some septic tanks that are relatively new could be retrofitted with a pump. Older septic tanks probably could not, would probably need to be replaced. And of course, you know, new infrastructure, instead of, of, you know, drain lines that go to your drain field, need to be a new pressure line that would connect to the public system, basically, out in the, the road right-of-way. That's a $5,000 to $25,000 cost, just depending on the circumstances of the property. And probably a little, little less anxious building, given the soils in Tumalo are just a little bit easier to, to excavate than, than other locations. And that's the big cost with things like this. So first, you, you probably noticed the option one and two have identical cost estimates. Some of that's due to coincidence, but, but the other, you know, the driving factor here is, is, you know, in the analysis, the consultant team's analysis of the TPOA system, they didn't feel that there was a substantial amount of reserve or excess capacity to serve new growth in, in Tumalo and take on new users. Now, the developer of that system would throw the challenge flag at that. You know, I think he believes there's more capacity there than maybe what our consultant team figured out. Our consultant team would say, well, you know, he may be right. Probably needs a little bit more analysis than, than what we were able to do with the information that we had. So, you know, but that, for the purposes of the study, we basically assume that TPOA is pretty close to, to capacity. If it's going to expand, it's gonna basically have to do the same infrastructure additions that option two would have, which is building, you know, new treatment capacity with a little packaged treatment unit, leasing or purchasing land for a drain field disposal area. So everything that, that accommodates new growth for option two, and, and, you know, is basically gonna have to, to happen with, with the TPOA system as well. There's discussion over, you know, hey, you know, privately, it can be constructed a lot cheaper than publicly. Some of that may be true, but for the purposes of, of this study, it was just, we used the same cost data to produce those estimates. And, and, you know, we'll get into, to some of the, the pros and cons a little bit more on the next slide with regards to the TPOA system. Option three, again, in lieu of, of adding a new treatment disposal site and land and pumping it up, up the hill out of, out of Tumalo, it's assuming that, you know, we can, it could be pumped to the City of Bend's interceptor, which is probably more in the near term than long term for being constructed with the development, Costco development everyone's talking about. The city was open to this. You know, consideration of adding Tumalo is, is kind of a customer, you know, when we did this study. And so we felt confident enough to, to provide this as an option. And things change. By the time, you know, this community's ready for a sewer system, you know, it's gonna be different folks in different places, different considerations, perhaps. But at least for now, you know, the city did show a willingness to perhaps, you know, add Tumalo, you know, as a, as kind of a single-unit customer, where the district could then, you know, pay the city's know, pay the city's hookup fee for the amount of sewage it's adding, you know, pay the system development charges associated with that, and then whatever sewer rate would be, could be negotiated to, to treat the effluent coming out of the community. Let's talk a little bit more about, about TPOA expansion and, and the opportunities and concerns, pros and cons. So the, so the biggest opportunity with TPOA is it's there. You know, it can provide some capacity, it has a little bit of capacity, depending on, you know, the developer thinks, you know, a fair amount, you know, our team thinks a little bit less, but, but it's there and it could serve interested properties immediately, you know, just simply by extending the, the pressure line under the highway into whatever properties, you know, are requesting it. So that's definitely a, a pro to, to its, its consideration. Also, you know, you can view TPOA as, as, you know, maybe something that a, a sanitary district on the west side of the highway could be formed and could contract with TPOA for treatment and disposal, you know, pumping into that system. So there's probably a way to, you know, still protect folks in the, in the wrapper of a sanitary district and, and while, you know, being a benefit to the TPOA system and taking advantage of their, their capacity and infrastructure that they, that they do have. So concerns with, with that system? There's risks associated with that ownership structure. It's spelled out, you know, via legal analysis in the study. There's, there's rates and fees and transparency that, that you don't maybe have on, on a public system per se. Right now, at least what we've been told, there's a thirty-five thousand dollar connection fee per EDU at a monthly rate of ninety-five dollars per month for the residents and folks that are using that. There's concern, and this came out in the advisory committee, there's concern that additional expansion of TPOA across the highway and, and taking on, especially some of those commercial customers, may render the rest of, of Tumalo unfeasible for any future system by kind of taking, you know, some of the, the big dog ratepayers out of the pool that would, you know, ultimately need to be there to support a, a new system that's not TPOA on the, the east side of the highway. So, you know, once you take out a few of the, you know, big ratepayers, is this the only system that will be feasible for this community moving forward? Finally, there's the potential that, that this system could satisfy DEQ's physical and legal availability requirements. And what that means is that Todd Cleveland back there can issue a septic permit, as long as, a new permit or repair permit, as long as sewer is not physically or legally available, and by that we mean within three, three hundred feet, and if, you know, the owner of that system is willing to serve that property, it can basically require, you know, the system to hook into that as the only solution available. So that's, that, that's a concern. And so, as the board, you know, we're anticipating TPOA wanting to, you know, hook, hook up new folks, and you're going to want to consider, as you consider issuing a license agreement for that pipe to locate in the county's right of way, in the public right of way, you know, these types of concerns. And I think that the owner of that system would be wise to, to read the, the report and understand, you know, here, here are the concerns of the community, how can those be mitigated or addressed, you know, in, in any proposal for a license agreement? All right, this is, this is my favorite work product of, of what the consultant team put together. It, it's a lot of colors here, very seasonal, perhaps a little bit. But basically, this, this table takes the various alternatives or options and takes the, a certain amount of grant funding assumption. There's, there's three categories, ten percent grant funding to construct the system, thirty percent grant funding to construct the system, and then fifty percent grant funding to construct the system. Those are the three scenarios represented here. And then it contrasts the, the hookup fee. Of course, the, the more hookup fee you pay, the, it reduces the debt service and the capital costs of construction. So the higher the hookup fee, the lower the loan payback, and the lower the sewer rate, which is represented in the color-coded fashion here. Kind of made a, just for the purpose of, of discussion, an assumption that, that a sewer rate would be considered to be feasible and acceptable if it's under a hundred dollars per month. And that's what's represented in green. And, and obviously, that's, that's perspective, that's, that's variable, and, and people have different ideas about what, you know, gosh, that is, a hundred dollars a month is a pretty high sewer rate, but is that the level of feasibility that, you know, that allows it to be, to this, something, a project like this to move forward? So as you can see, the higher the hookup fee and the more grant funding available is when we start to encounter those feasibility scenarios of under a hundred dollars per month, based on Phase One as a commercial only, or full build as, as serving the entire community. Alternative Two, which is, you know, Option Two, a new system, new STEP system for the community. Option Three is a new STEP system but pumping to the city of Bend. Again, and, and with the assumption as well that, you know, the other, the other thing about TPOA is, you know, as a private system, it's probably not eligible for any public funding. And so that, that part of it's been excluded from, from this table. So a lot to look at, but those, that's the basic premise, is that, you know, in order to, to get a feasible sewer rate, you have to charge a higher hookup fee and you need more grant funding. And so when the community leaders and champions of sanitary district, you know, want to wade into this, this water, they're going to need to understand that there's going to be a lot of pursuit of grant funding necessary, and probably conversations around hookup fees that are, they're, you know, they are what they are. They can be high. So what comes next? You know, again, this is a study that, that basically is, is presented to the community for folks that are interested in forming a sanitary district and taking that next step. Here's come that thirty-thousand-foot analysis of what type of system could be considered for this community. There's three different options, and I think they're all, you know, on the table. There's, there's not one necessarily that I could say, well, that'll never happen. You know, hooking to the city of Bend is, is a, is a nice concept, especially if, if you think about the sanitary district and all the headache permitting and treatment and disposal. If you can pump that away and, and just pay that, that sewer bill on a monthly basis, write one check as a district and spread that out amongst your users, you know, that's, that's basically where we've landed in Terrebonne as, as the preferred choice. Option Two is, is certainly, you know, basically started from scratch, and, you know, that, that's still viable. Option, Option One, of course, TPOA, it's there. It's, it, it has a little bit of capacity. They have planned for additional expansion. And so that, that system's a step ahead, even though it would be, it would be costly to do that. So here's the basic, you know, the, the steps that the community, we need to take place, kind of shown in this graphic. Form that stakeholder group, committee, you know, you need champions to step forward and, and push this within the community, and really start, you know, the conversation around forming a district. Once you form a district, there's a little more analysis work you have to do in terms of engineering design, but then, once you have that in place, let's go see what, what grant funding falls out of the sky. We're in a unique grant funding environment right now for infrastructure, especially utility-type infrastructure, anything to do with, with water quality and the proximity of the river through this community. You know, it does present a unique funding opportunity that, that could be leveraged here. So that's, that's what the community, you know, these folks are here to, you know, think about in, in their comments, is like, do I, do I want to be the champion, or, you know, that's not for me? Finally, the, the second bullet here is, is board now that, that TPOA system has been, you know, analyzed against other, other options in the community, knowing that, that in order for that system to expand, they're going to need to come to the board and say, hey, we want to locate in the public right of way. Can we have your permission to do that? Now you have information to, to understand the pros and cons of that, and perhaps help, help the community arrive at a, a, a good solution as a way, you know, to perhaps leverage, you know, that system, or simply understand that, you know, it's, it's further expansion may jeopardize, you know, the, the grander solution for the rest of the community. I was going to give Suzanne a couple of slides to talk about. I was going to tap my head, and, but we made it through.
Did great.
Now's the time for, for questions. Now, this is the website where the, the final study document is, is located, in addition to all the supporting information that, that was accumulated through the process. All the Zoom meetings, virtual meetings were recorded, and you can watch them as well. So, Board, I understand you, you do want to hear from the, the folks in the community. So we're, we'll take a step back and let them have, have the pulpit here, but are there any questions we can answer before?
Chris, I have a question. Are you going to do a presentation in Tumalo some evening of this for those people that are at work today and really don't have access to watching things on the internet, they would rather hear it in person?
You know, certainly. You know, the study is published. We can, we can do this exact same presentation, and, and I would say attaching that to the Tumalo Community Plan process, you know, would be a, a good little side conversation with the understanding, community, you know, there's so many things happening in Tumalo. A lot of this stuff can, you know, gets, you know, kind of crossways, it can be confusing. Got a big roundabout project, pet undercrossing project, Tumalo Community Plan, sewer feasibility, it's, it's a lot to take in. And, you know, that's the reason why, you know, Tumalo Community Plan paused, so that we didn't have this conversation, because it was becoming a little too confusing with, you know, kind of blended with that, that Tumalo Community Plan process. Now that, that we're nearing the end, we could certainly present this again, you know, in another, another forum, maybe attached to that, to that planning work.
Thank you.
Related question. How much, I, I've scanned a little bit of what has happened in the advisory committee meetings. How, how much of this presentation has the advisory committee received at this point? And were those meetings, you know, accessible, you know, timed a time of day and in a location that was pretty accessible to residents of Tumalo?
Yeah, so we, we went ahead and just did a Zoom call for the advisory committee meetings. We also made it available to the public. At times, we had quite a few more public members and advisory committee members, you know, listening in. The, I would say that, you know, I was, you know, what we were trying to do here was, you know, you know, the goal was to, to get, get, develop the champions through this process. And, you know, kind of right away, we discovered that, you know, that, you know, there may have been a few champions in the room, but there are also a few that, that really weren't excited about this at all. And so the goal of, of kind of moving the advisory committee to that sanitary district formation group, you know, was, appeared to be right away, this, this wasn't, you know, the, the group that was going to do that. There may be some here that, that will, and they can go off and, and grab others. But, and then that was the, the nature of the, the diversity of the folks that we had in the room, which is fine. You know, the community, this is, impacts the community, and, and the community gets to talk about it, you know, one way or the other.
But it has been, the advisory committee has been a channel for the Tumalo community to, to track the progress of this study and
Yeah.
to receive basically the information that we just received here.
Right, yeah. What you have here is just a culmination of what's been presented in the three meetings that, that we had.
Right.
That, that are still available for, for public view as well.
Yeah, I mean, both of these questions, you know, about, about, you know, kind of how much is this information out and available for, for people in Tumalo are, are really important because, you know, and I'll just, here's a couple of framing thoughts. You know, but just want to make it very clear to everyone, the, the county is, does not do water or wastewater utilities. We are not doing, you know, at this point, we're not doing anything else with this, this study. We, we supported this analysis, we paid for it, but whether anything happens depends on people in the Tumalo community. You know, I think it's, I think it's clear, you know, based on what we know about the, the geology and the shallow groundwater and the connections to the river, that something needs to be done about protecting groundwater quality, protecting the river. You know, again, the county is not, is, is not a, a water or wastewater utility operator like a city would be. So we're not doing that to, we're not doing that for anyone, we're not doing that to anyone. We are presenting, you know, information on the options that are, you know, the, the best options that, or the options that we know are on the table. We're trying to put together information to support community members in, in, in making those decisions. And now the question, the big question is, who is going to step up and, and do something? And if, if people don't want to step up and form a wastewater district, you know, other people in their committee are already stepping up and, and, and bringing forward proposals. So, you know, it, again, I think the, the key question at this moment in time for the Tumalo community is, who is going to step up and do something?
I just wondered if Todd Cleveland could just come up and make a few remarks. Thank you, Todd, for your service to the county and your expertise. I know.
Good morning.
Directly.
Community Development Department onsite wastewater program. So you were, you were asking about the specifics about some of the onsite concerns.
Right.
So as, as Chris has talked about, the, the coarse textured soil, so I would say that they're excessively drained is kind of the way to describe them from a soil science perspective. They're super gravelly. There's a thin layer of ashy material at the surface and then very gravelly coarse material, alluvial material, which was deposited by the river. It's, so it's very rapidly draining and very low filtration, so the water goes through it very rapidly. These older systems that are in place are more of disposal systems. Well, over time, we've moved to where we talk about onsite wastewater treatment systems, right? So it's not just disposal. So you have, there's several anecdotes came up during the process discussing issues with old systems, but I've seen pits of gravel that were there, that have been there for probably seventy, eighty years. They, they dispose of the wastewater, but treatment is not really, you know, a significant component. So when somebody's going through a redevelopment plan, we have to try to deal with that, and this, you know, small footprint, very small lots, high density. And as, as we've discussed with the Terrebonne issue, I've had several difficult conversations with people trying to develop properties, including residential properties, because the lot size minimum is a half acre. And so we have well setback issues, we have space issues, we have sizing restrictions and constraints, and the commercial systems are even harder than residential systems to deal with. So all those factors combined make it challenging to, to develop going forward.
So the Mexican restaurant that closed quite a few years ago, I remember reading that it was going to cost three-hundred thousand in order to put it back into use. What would that figure be today if we don't do something? Do we have any idea?
I don't know, and I, yeah, it was very, there were lots of rumors about that system, and I don't know what the actual cost of that system was going to be, but it was going to be a comparable system to what they ended up placing at the store next door, which is an Advantex Max system with nutrient removal, and it has additional additives, and, and it takes a lot of servicing and maintenance and oversight to make sure that that system's going to perform to peak levels. And restaurants wastes, particularly like Mexican restaurants, they, the, the amount of food that they're making has very high strength, so it was even greater complexity to deal with in the store system. The same property owner owned all those at that time, the, the land. Since then, that property is sold. So it's, it, they weren't able, they didn't want to invest in that, you know, to try to get that, maintain that restaurant and keep it open, it was too expensive for them.
Thank you, Todd.
Todd, could you, could you talk about, a, a little bit about the movement of water in the ground in this area? I mean, so I'm, I'm following the, the very gravelly soil, so if there's, if there's a little bit of polluted water leaking out of someone's, someone's wastewater system, is that going sideways towards the river? Is it going down, or is it going both?
First place, it's going to go down very rapidly, probably once it gets to the saturated zone, that it'll move with wherever the flow pattern of that water is. There hasn't been a detailed, you know, hydrologic study in that specific region. Some of the information that I have, Commissioner DeBonne may remember, there was a, a variance, and I took him to the site probably four or five years ago. We were having a variance hearing with DEQ where they were proposing advanced treatment, and we And we, during that discussion with DEQ, variance hearings have informational components to it. We had a phone conversation with the DEQ hydrologist, and he did some evaluation of minimal data that's available. And he did say that there are impacts to the water and that, yes, this treatment system needed to have advanced treatment. So if there was going to be a variance approval. So there was a variance approval, and it required nitrogen removal, much like what we have in South Deschutes County.
And that variance process is a result of you not being able to prove, approve a system to the standard systems you could put in.
Exactly.
So then the property owner says, well, what's my next step? You can ask the state to take a look at this.
Exactly. So, so we have to go out, we apply the rules at the county, you know, as an agent of DEQ. If the site doesn't meet that criteria, we're obligated to deny a septic permit for that site. They have the opportunity to make proposals through a consultant process to overcome the limitations of the site and still meet the, the protective standards of the rules. That's a variance to the rules. So the DEQ variance officer makes that determination based on, on input during a public hearing process. So that, generally, that, you know, it's going to move rapidly down, hit the aquifer and probably head in the same general direction to the north, which the groundwater is probably flowing because that's the way the river flows. There's a lot of connectivity between the river and the groundwater in that area. So it's likely that, you know, those waters are all mixed. There's unknown quantities. The Tumalo, you know, Tumalo Creek flows in just upstream from there. So there's additional, you know, flows so that Tumalo has, has had some flooding events, you know, in the past. So there's more, there can be times where a lot of water's flowing through that area. So there could be dilution. But it's unknown what the total impacts would be.
And in, in times of flooding, there might actually be stuff coming back up and spreading around.
Yes, it could capture more of the pollutants and then carry it away. Yes. Unknown.
Thank you, Todd.
Mm-hmm.
We do have a couple of people that wanted to use some time to say something because I think it's important that we hear from the community. The first person, and you do have three minutes, and you also, if you have testimony you want to give us for feedback, that's fine too, is Robert Fish. They both work fine. It's your choice.
Go to the right. Go to the right. I really didn't expect to be the first one. I was hoping somebody else would break the ice a little bit.
Talk about ice, yes.
Yeah, it's coming. First of all, I'd like to thank the Commissioners for giving us this opportunity to, to speak the things that we have on our minds and, and ask questions about-
If you'll just identify yourself with your name. I do have your address and everything.
Okay. I'm Robert Fish. I live in Tumalo. I've been a lifelong resident there in, in that area. So again, thank you Commissioners for allowing us to do this. So with the Tumalo Property Owners Association system, it does sound, with the information we've had, it sounds like it's kind of not going to be one of the options that's going to be pursued. But I think they are a good opportunity to see how that kind of a system would actually function. And I, I don't know if anybody's looked at their service records and their DEQ reports on functionality and performance. I know sometimes those systems can have little, little glitches in them. And I say that because I have been in the wastewater, onsite wastewater industry for probably 30 years or so. I started working with United Pipe and Supply, selling the equipment. And then I started a company called The Tank Doctor, and we did maintenance on onsite systems, residential and small commercial systems, that basically were the advanced treatment systems. I worked with Tony a little bit down in Lapine.
I was just remembering that. We took apart a system, that study system.
Right, for the Lapine Demonstration Project. And so I've, I've had my hands in to stuff, I guess, for quite a while. So I understand the, the big concept of everything with the individual sites and then the, the larger centralized system that, that takes everybody's stuff and processes I have a couple of questions about some of the things that have been brought forth. Chris, not Chris, Todd mentioned that the, the DEQ hydrologist said that there was effect of the, of the septic systems on the water quality in Tumalo. I was just wondering what level of effect and how that was determined, that it was actually the, the septic systems and not some other environmental process. Tumalo does allow farm animals, horses and pigs and chickens and things like that. So there could be an issue like of that. And also, it could have been fertilizers applied to, to lawns. It was mentioned that 95 commercial lots are available in Tumalo. I don't know if those are individual surveyed lots or if it's the actual building lots. We'd want to look at that. I don't believe there's 95 spots to have 95 separate businesses down there. And it was also mentioned, I think Chris said, that there's a relative high water table in Tumalo. I'd like to have specifics on what relative high water table is. I know it's not near like it is in, in Lapine. We don't have water surfacing in our yards in Tumalo. And there's lots of residential wells that could be tested to see what the average static level is of that. I, I think it might be a little bit deeper than what most people imagine. The Leyla Water District well is over 600 feet, and that's in the basin at the school is where that's located at. So the well is drilled really deep to get lots of good clean water down there.
Right.
And I think that's about all that I have for now.
Thank you for those good questions, and thank you for the information about the Leyla well, that it, it is at 600 feet?
Dale Peir has a better idea of the exact depth of, of that one.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Just a comment on that. Community water systems dig very deep wells-
Yes.
...to avoid any yucky stuff-
Mm-hmm.
...in, in the shallow groundwater. So I mean, you, you can see in Tumalo where the level of the river is.
Right.
The groundwater is at most that, that deep and quite possibly-
If, if you come back away from the river, it's really odd. The water table is actually deeper than the river. It's not equal to the river height.
If, in situations like that, rivers, you have what's called a losing stream-
Mm-hmm.
...where, you know, if the groundwater is lower than the river, the, the water is actually leaving the river to go into the ground. So as far as I'm aware, that there, you don't have a, a, a losing stream system in, in that chunk of the Middle Deschutes.
Okay. I, I would, gosh, can't think of the word, ask that, that we actually test the well depths and see where they are in relation to the river. We had one on our property, and I don't remember the exact numbers of it, but the static level of the groundwater, of the well water was below the actual elevation of the river. So it, it wasn't equal across.
You know how much?
I, I can't say exactly, but I do remember that it was, it was different. So I'd like to have those tested and checked on well logs or actual measurements.
I guess the question is, who, who are you asking to do that? Because, again-
Right, right, right. That, that would be part of the further feasibilities to, to, to test and see. I don't know if it would be the, the Advisory Committee have that or, I'm not sure. But if we're just saying, oh, the water level has to be equal to the river-
It doesn't have to be.
Right.
But, but in, in places where groundwater levels are significantly lower than river levels-
Mm-hmm.
...the river will lose water. And we don't see the, the Middle Deschutes River losing substantial amounts of water-
Correct.
...in, in that, in that, in that stretch. So just, you know, it, it can't be, it can't be that big of a difference.
Right. Oh, I know it's not hundreds of feet of difference, no. It's, it's 10, 20 feet or so.
Well, that'd be great to, great, great to learn more about that.
Okay.
Thank you, Robert.
Thanks.
Jeannie Fraley? And Jeannie, thank you for your service. I saw your name on the committee.
And if there are other people who want to make comments, you are, you can submit blue forms. I saw hands going up. It's, the, the process is to submit a blue form and then you'll get in the, get in the line.
First of all, I want to thank you guys so much for seeing us today and allowing us to speak on this topic. And Merry Christmas to everybody and everybody in the room, and thank you for everyone else who came as well. So that's awesome. So my name is Jeannie Fraley, 64790 Bruce Avenue, Tumalo. And I was part of the Advisory Committee, so I got, you know, I was blessed to be able to attend all of the Zoom meetings. And I want to thank Susanna for the amazing job that she did. She's such a sweetheart, and she did such a good job. And I've talked to everyone, Chris and Todd, and I, we've all, we've all spoken quite a bit on the phone about concerns that I've had. And so I guess my question would be, where do we go from here as a community? So my main concern is I want to represent Tumalo as a whole. I want to, I want, I want the residents to be able to come together as well as the commercial property owners, and I, I want us to be able to come and figure this out together. That would make me super happy if that could happen. Don't know if it can, but we'll try. So what I'm hearing is that probably the next step would be a sanitation district, to form something to do that. And then I, I was also thinking it would be great because like Phil had mentioned the fact that really a lot of the residents don't know a whole lot about this. So it's just what I've been able to get out and the few of us that have been able to get stuff out to people. Yes, they did have some meetings and things at the school, but it was more of a, I hate to say it, but like a sales presentation, like this is what we've got, these are your choices, you know, type of thing. There wasn't detail like Chris gave. And I just, it was so awesome what Chris shared with us this morning. It was really, really great. And so my thought is, as I'm sitting back there writing notes, is that we need to meet as a community to discuss where we go next from here, right? To, let's get, you know, I don't see many of the commercial people here right now. You know, I see a lot of residents here right now. But we need to discuss like, where are we going to go with this? And Phil is correct. It's like eventually, we're looking at having to have some sort of a sewer system in Tumalo. It's like, I understand that, but as a resident, I would like to have some control as to what that will look like in our future. So where are we going to go with this? How is that going to look? So, and, so I would like to, if we, if the county actually sponsors a meeting, I guess I should say, at Tumalo School, then it's free. If I do it, I have to pay money in order to use the school. And we need to have a larger area so that people can come and, you know, really state their concerns and really hear. I'd love to have Chris there to share what he shared today. You know, that was fabulous. So that, that, I'm kind of dreaming here, but that'd be really cool. So skipping around a little bit, so I want to talk about the Larry Kind system a little bit. So the commercial district, they want the Larry Kind system. And the reason they want that is because they want sewer now. They want it as fast as they can so that they can develop. And, you know, whatever, if there's 95 or whatever lots that Chris was sharing with us, those lots range from 25 feet by 100 lot to, or by 100 feet to 50 feet to 100 feet. So they're really tiny. And what I've found is that most of the residents in Tumalo are on more than one lot. So, and we have combined our lots. So I had three lots and they're combined into one lot now. And so that, that's a thought as well as to, some of the big concerns is the fact that Tumalo, the residents, they want to keep our small community feel, right? And so they don't want to have, you know, big high-rise apartments and, you know, tons of businesses. I think we're kind of overpopulated a bit with businesses right now. That's just my personal opinion down there. So there's been a lot of stuff going in. But with the Larry Kind system, yes. So the, everyone will be, there's a $35,000 fee just to connect. Then we would have to pay for the pumps, the piping, any septic and, or tanks and stuff that would need to be replaced and all of that, which would probably be in the excess of at least another $35,000, looking at $70,000 per residents in Tumalo. You know, and that's devastating to a lot of the people there. There's a lot of people that are very low income. We would need to have like grants, some sort of funding available to help these people and to help offset our costs like they shared in the presentation. And so that would be ideal. As you know, there hasn't been a river study done, a river analysis on our river. And, you know, so we don't really know the total impact as Rob had shared about, you know, the farm animals and things like that there, you know, that other, other impacts. You know, we do have in the summertime, we have a lot of people floating on the river, which causes a lot of, you know, wastewater going directly into the river from the people, which, which I've witnessed as well. So the TPO, TPOA system has problems right now. So there, there's complaints of alarms going off. People can't have company because it sets off alarms. You know, if they, you know, flush their toilet more than, you know, a few times, alarms go off. And I don't know personally, I haven't witnessed that. That's just hearsay, what I've heard from the residents that live in that area. Let's see. So some of the commercial properties down there, they built over their existing drain fields. Now, they should have, in my thought, they should have considered that when they were going in there and, you know, realized that they're going to need to use this for a while, right? Rather than just assuming that there's going to be a sewer system in. And that's another thing I'd like to bring up is that the realtors have been basically told that the sewer system is a done deal in Tumalo. So they are, you know, sort of told now that they can sell properties stating that we're, there's a sewer system like right there, you know, coming in right now. So there, and that's part of the, the false rumors and things. So there's rumors out there going around that I don't know how to stop them. All I know is to like tell people the truth when they come to me about things and try to do that. So let's see. Another issue is, as I think Chris had stated, so if, if we do nothing and don't develop a sanitation district, the commercial property owners will do something, and they will obviously bring the Larry Kind system over because that's the quickest way for them to get something solved like right away. And if that happens, then the residents are going to be stuck with whatever is there. We won't have an opportunity to do, to do anything else. So it's going to be expand that system and try to make it work. And that's a little scary. And then, yes, it's like, so if it does not have the capacity, let's say to hook myself up and some other people up, you know, I'm, I'm not really sure what that would look like. So then at that point, can we repair our system if we can't hook up to that? I don't know. That's a bigger question for out a little ways. So I also heard that there's been an application, someone would like to put in 40-plus units just south of beyond the Ranch Antiques. So there's a triangular piece of property over there, and they're looking to develop that. I don't know if that's going to be apartments or if it's going to be houses or what the big picture of that is looking. So there's another 40-plus homes or residents going in that way. I, I have another question that if, let's say we have the sewer system and Tumalo residents do not want it to be this big mass development of, you know, high-density housing, right, that could- that could happen on these little tiny lots with the sewer system. Would the county be willing to waive the fees for people to combine their lots? So I just want to throw that out there since we're here. So it's just a thought. And I was talking to my friend Martha back here and she did just recently have to put a pump in her well. And the pump, Phil, was set at 60 feet. And so that's like 20 feet below the water table and she is pretty close to the river. And I think that's about all I have. So again, I just thank you so much, commissioners. And then, you know, if we could figure out how to get something together to where we can meet as a community, which I may need one or all or whoever can come to do that. And I'd love to have Chris as well if he would join us with that too, because he's just a wealth of information. And Susanna as well.
A wealth of information.
Yes, he is. He's been so good helping me and to understand all. Because I'm brand new at all of this. It's like, you know, it's like just a regular little person stepping into it and learning a lot.
Anyway, Jeannie, thank you for your testimony today.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you for your suggestion.
And thank you for stepping up as a regular person from your community to help clarify what's going on and lead.
Jim Dunn also filled out a form. So Jim, thank you.
From Tumalo. A few comments, a lot of questions. First of all, in the Mexican restaurant, you indicated 300,000. That was because of the county's requirement to put a road through that alleyway to connect Hook to where the church is. So that's where the majority of that funding was. Per Chris, the expensive repair, as he stated early on, was for someone with a broken septic was $20,000. Yet we see the proposal of $35,000 just to hook up plus $95 a month. So I ask you to do the math. The TPO is undersized and Kind's business model is fraught with misrepresentation. And you've all received a letter stating that to dig into his nonprofit and then his for-profit. And I believe the attorneys received that as well. The sewer, you guys keep separating the sewer from the plan. The sewer is the foundation for growth. So it does impact the 2040 plan. You can't grow unless you have the sewer. We want to maintain our rural community. So you can't separate those two. Beaver Lane, I walked Beaver Lane, spoke to all the residents. One Beaver Lane resident wants the sewer to go in. And the reason, she says she has an Advantix system above ground, which is a solution. Works perfect. She doesn't need the sewer, but she's a realtor and she wants to take advantage of the growth of Tumalo. So nobody on Beaver Lane wants it. They just actually asphalted, it was gravel, and then they put in a new road. So I asked the consultant, did anybody talk to Beaver Lane since they're in Phase 1 or Phase 2 of the program? I asked Chris Doty on the Zoom call, and he brings it up again. He says, "The community is asking for this." And I stated in our November 14th meeting with you, is the community two business owners and a businessman trying to exploit the Tumalo residents? Or is it the 95% of Tumalonians that don't want it?
So one note on that. I mean, this is putting facts on the table about things that are being discussed in the community. So there's more information for the contentious issues that are out there. You know, you're taking a strong position. We're trying to support, here's some facts about these discussions that are happening.
I appreciate that. Thank you. So I spoke to five owners, as Jeannie said, about the current TPO program with Larry Kind. First of all, in the TPO, TPOA, a lot owner, a homeowner in that community has one vote for their HOA, which is fair, right? Larry Kind has nine votes per lot. So tell me about integrity. Then we asked them about their system, these five owners. And as Jeannie stated, they can't have relatives over on a Thanksgiving weekend because they get a service call. That's fact. They get the service.
I experienced that also, septic systems, the ATT systems. When I moved into my property, I thought my hearing was going bad because I could hear this little ring way off in the distance. I figured out it was somebody's septic system that had tripped and it was going off for a month. So that happens. I mean, it happens.
On a regular basis on a new.
And it's not good if it's regular. Absolutely.
And we're trying to expand it in. Their system is undersized. And I'm just telling you what the customers are saying. Those are facts. I also asked the consultant what financial, what percentage interest rate. Phil, I talked to you about that. We were going to ask her what interest rate was used for the financials. Last time we saw was 2%. So give me 2% money somewhere. And that changes, one half of 1% changes that whole business model. And then Chris stated, it is what it is on the hookup fee. Well, there's a lot of people in Tumalo that can't afford the $35,000 plus the $95 per month. So did we, as a consultant, did we ask the Tumalonians if they could afford that? And if they can't afford it, is there a lien on their house? Do they have to sell? And I don't think we want to disrupt our community.
We do, I mean, I want to draw attention back to that very complicated colorful chart that Chris showed.
I've studied that several times.
Basically, you know, kind of, it shows how grant funding, hookup costs, and monthly fees interact. And so when you said earlier, you know, like compare $35,000 to $25,000 for a new septic system, there are opportunities for the hookup to be less than $35,000.
And you saw the percentage rates of those grant funding, anywhere from 10% to 50% gets it to a reasonable hookup fee and a reasonable monthly fee. And as Chris said, it may be $100. $100 is a lot for people that are on fixed income.
I understand that, yeah.
And when I don't need a new system. And it doesn't replace my septic.
Your septic may be in, you know, relatively current and in decent shape. But we know that there's a lot of wastewater systems in the Tumalo area.
So instead of spending $13 million on a new system plus $100 a month per customer, why don't we go to an Advantix system, which Jim Crouch did with the Heritage brand and others have done like on Beaver Lane, which costs less than $35,000 and has no monthly fee. And it targets specifically the customers or the residents that need it. We offered that to the consultant and it wasn't brought up as option four.
You're talking to your fellow Tumalo community members. There's no decision space here for us unless we give a permit to Larry Kind to go across the highway, which obviously you wouldn't be supportive of. So I mean, it feels contentious here, but we're just sharing information today.
And I'm sharing information too. My point is, we shared with the consultant, there's five options. You've done the three perfectly laid out. Our point is, we weren't listened to. Option four is do nothing. And option five is an Advantix system or similar sand filter that costs less than the system that you're proposing and has no monthly fee and only targets the residents that have an issue. Question is, how many residents today have an issue?
As I say, these are conversations for the community. I mean.
That should have been part, we gave that information to the consultant. And I'm just concerned that it wasn't brought up to you today as another.
Well, as I say, this is for us, us as a community here.
I guess, Jim, I would say I'm sorry that that wasn't an option considered in the feasibility study. That doesn't preclude you from putting together the option yourself and putting it right alongside.
Yeah, no, I understand. My concern is that, again, as I stated, November 14th, the RFP given by the county had one of the line items for the consultant was market this, sell this to the community. So I asked the question again, is it a feasibility study or is that a marketing plan?
And Jim, just to confirm what you said, that Heritage, their new building, they put Advantix in, in the new building?
They, I don't know specifically, but they did the above ground, which is a small footprint for, and you can look into the details of those systems. They will fit on a residential small lot. And they do everything that we're asking that they do.
If I could also just say, you know, this is very high level. But it's really important for people to understand. We, this is, this feasibility study is not changing your community. Your community is changing already. This feasibility study is a response to change and trying to help, you know, help provide the community with information to be better prepared to come out the other end of that change in a better place in various ways, depending on what your goals are. So like the, I mean, kind of hammering on the feasibility study because you're concerned about change, it's, I think it's a little bit misdirected.
I disagree with you. I think when you have two commercial business owners and then a business person that's trying to exploit the Tumaloni of residents, that doesn't represent our community.
But the feasibility study, the feasibility study wasn't set up to give preference or present favorably one of those options. It was set up to provide information on three options. We're not, we're nuts.
Who asked for the feasibility?
Nobody is selling option one. I mean, like, and again, the county is not, the county is not a, you know, a water or wastewater utility agency. We are not, we're not doing it for you. We're not doing it to you. The information is available for people to do with what they will.
Yeah, my question is, who asked for the feasibility study?
I honestly do not know.
Kelly Rourke, Jim Crouch, and Larry Kind. And then that's where you provided $150,000 of federal funds to handle the feasibility study.
And the reason that I was supportive of doing that is because I have concerns about groundwater contamination and water quality in the river.
And my concern is it's a self-interest to those commercial property owners. And they say they need it to handle their business. But maybe Tumalo isn't right for commercial. Maybe we don't want commercial.
Well, that is.
We don't want that growth.
That is a completely appropriate input to provide when we're talking about the land use compatibility statement application. Right now, we're talking about, you know, the three options that were presented in that feasibility study. You pointed out that you think that there should have been a fourth. I would welcome, you know, someone doing that work and adding that fourth.
And my concern is, why wasn't that fourth one? When we as a community gave that input to the consultant, that's a shortfall in the feasibility study. It should have been addressed as, here are the reasons why it would work and here are the reasons why the Advantix or similar sand filter would not work.
I'm sorry that that wasn't included. It's not a conspiracy. I just, that's.
No, that's not my point. My point is, why aren't we listening to the community? We go to these meetings at the Tumalo Elementary School. We're building relationships, quote unquote. Peter Russell, we want your input. We give input and then it's not addressed at this meeting. That's a shortfall and it's misrepresenting this whole feasibility study. Feasibility is having that Advantix or similar system. And I don't understand why it wasn't here. Also.
Could have been considered in the feasibility.
As I addressed with you last week, the 2% interest rate changes that whole color model. Is that money there? Also, grant funding, do we have money guaranteed from a federal or state level?
And I can guarantee.
If we don't, hope is not a strategy.
What I can guarantee you is that there is grant funding and public low-interest financing available. What it takes to get it is somebody stepping up and forming a district and applying for those funds.
So I'll just say that hope is not a strategy.
Well, you know, there are wastewater districts, there are city, there are municipalities all over the nation right now that are securing financing, grant and low-interest loan financing at those rates. That's not, that's not, that's not hope. That's not hope. That is reality. But it takes someone stepping up to access those monies. And so there's a big difference between, you know, a wish and an opportunity. And there are opportunities available right now if the community can figure out what it wants to do collectively, as Jeannie was describing, and step up and do something. Those rates, those grant dollars are available. And this is a, you know, they may not be available for very long because this is a window of opportunity that's being presented to us by the passage of the bipartisan infrastructure bill by Congress in 2021.
Our inflation maker.
Pardon?
The inflation maker.
Call it what you will. I think investments in infrastructure that help our economy work are good investments.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, I do believe we allocated 30 minutes to hear from the community and I thank you. And if you have other comments, if you could send an email in, that would be great. Chris, is there anything you wanted to close with? No? Okay, all right. So there's several suggestions. I'm sure we'll talk about it later, won't we, Chris? Thank you.
Can I just ask one additional question about the relationship between the land use compatibility statement application and the information from this feasibility, this feasibility study? I believe that that land use compatibility statement application has been challenged up through, it went to Luba and then they handed it over to the Circuit Court. And I'd like to know if it is possible that that's coming back to us. And if so, I want to understand the relationship between the information that's been compiled for this feasibility study and that decision.
Thank you, commissioners. Good morning. For the record, Will Groves, your planning manager. So there was an application filed, a land use compatibility statement by TPOA, asking a question, what land use action would be required under Title 18, if any, to extend sewer lines into the community? And that was sent to a local hearings officer with a description of two- to four-inch lines being extended throughout the community to provide this service. There was a question under our code about the difference between major and minor utility facilities. So is a relatively involved community, a relatively involved land use process for major utility facilities? And certainly those would be, you know, BPA, primary lines, three-foot diameter gas pipelines coming through the community that, you know, are going north to south, state to state. We know that those things require special types of review. There's a question if this tripped that threshold or if it was instead a minor facility, which would be, you know, the local telephone poles coming down your road that generally the county doesn't want to be involved in the review of and set a preference for that. The hearings officer concluded that these were in fact a minor facility with the exclusion of, and that no land use review was required except where it intersected with the floodplain, at which point you have to do the FEMA stuff, which really boils down to put it back the way you found it and don't create new flow paths or new dams as you're putting this in, real straightforward. That decision was appealed onto Luba. And because it's a land use compatibility statement, the question being asked primarily, or initially was, is this a matter to which Luba has jurisdiction? And so there are some things which are land use decisions that they have jurisdiction over and there's some matters to which are instead referred to the courts. And so Luba reviewed the case and determined that the hearings officer's interpretations generally seem plausible, that he had correctly characterized the nature of the use. And that with regard to the merits of the case, that was in fact something that would be pushed into Circuit Court. So we expect ongoing judicial decisions associated with this. But it's important to remember that this question is just a question of, are permits, are any permits? And if so, which ones would be required to put these sorts of utility lines in the road right of way? You know, generally, as we think about these things, these types of utility facilities, what we're thinking about historically has been, you know, just making sure that they're not creating some obvious physical difficulties. So, you know, we wouldn't want, for example, somebody to dig a utility trench and then leave a big hole that, you know, would cause somebody's driveway to not access the road. Or to the extent that there were small pump stations or other facilities that they weren't on-site or unscreened. You know, it's that type of compatibility that's generally been thought about. This is a new question, which is, you know, if this is a major, if this was determined to be a major facility and thus a conditional use, what would compatibility include in that case? Would it just be sort of the aesthetics of the facility or does it raise to the question of? Or does it raise to the question of the, the function of the facility? You know, what it, in fact, it does, what changes it brings to the community? So, that, uh, that question of, is this a major or minor facility, is off into the courts, and we're waiting to see what the next step would be associated with that.
And, and does any of the information that was produced by this feasibility study have any bearing on that, uh, on, on what the court is going to be considering?
It would not. This is a question under our code, under Title 18, what land use needs to be undertaken. Certainly, the board, through their right-of-way controls, as was mentioned, has, you know, a licensing ability for these types of facilities if they're going to go in the right-of-way. But the question of, is there a separate public process to identify compatibility of the facility? That's the one that's off in the courts.
And, uh, under what, under what scenarios, uh, under what scenarios, you know, what, what decision scenarios in the court is, is the application coming back to us, uh, to the Board of Commissioners for further consideration?
It, it will be interesting to see what the court does. If the court, in fact, concludes that the hearings officer did a reasonable job of it, presumably, there's, you know, there's nothing coming back. Certainly, remand is always a possibility where the courts find that there's not enough information or additional findings need to be made. Irreversal is possible as well. It seems like, based on Luba's analysis and the hearings officer's analysis, that there seems to be decent judicial support for the notion that this would be a minor facility under our code. So, it would be surprising to see in the courts that that, you know, to independent, both a, an independent reviewer and an independent review body, Luba, who seemed to find that that approach is generally feasible. I would be surprised to see a reversal of that in the courts, but, you know, I've been surprised before. And, uh, so reversal, remand are definitely something that could be possible. But, um, you know, at least at this point, the anticipation would be is that our hearings officer went in the right direction in characterizing this, especially with Luba's affirmation that, that his, uh, his approach seemed reasonable.
And then, uh, you know, beyond the, the land use compatibility, compatibility statement question, what, uh, what other decision points are there at the county level related to the TPOA proposal?
So, speaking specifically to the land use requirements, uh, the, certainly, if the TPOA needs to expand their facilities, so they need additional treatment cells up on the Laidlaw property, there's reviews that are associated with that. We've done those in the past. Those are, you know, those are generally limited to making sure that, uh, there's not some obvious bad thing that's going to happen either to the property itself or its neighboring properties. So, those are relatively straightforward. And if the courts conclude that this is, in fact, a minor facility, then there's no land use compatibility, there's no land use action that goes through, no, uh, review associated with putting pipes out into the community with the exclusion of crossing the floodplain, which are, you know, really, it's just dig a trench, put your pipe in, put it back the way you found it, don't make a mess.
Okay, so for, for folks who are here today, who are interested in the way that that TPOA proposal is progressing, um, I, I, basically, what we're hearing is that the Board of Commissioners has a pretty minimal role in whether that moves forward or not at this point?
At this point, it's moving in the courts, and to the extent it comes back, that would be, you know, if you've gotten direction from the courts for additional action. It's important to note that there are some tangential issues that, you know, or that might be more than tangential issues about what constitutes a public utility. Some other things that the hearings officer ruled on that could send this back to the board for interpretation, or we could get direction from the courts. So, at this point, we just, we get to sit tight and see where that goes, and there may be, there may be action for the board, either in response to that court action, or certainly, one of the things that boards do is, when they find out their code doesn't work the way they hoped, they can initiate legislative processes to update that code. That, with some regularity, we find out from the courts that our code didn't do what the board hoped, and that's an opportunity to, to explore code changes, if that was, in fact, the board's direction based on what the courts found our, our code compelled.
Thank you.
Thanks, Will.
Thank you.
Okay. We are now, um, with the Planning Commission representation. Peter? Thank you, Chris. Thank you. Thank you, Todd.
Well, good morning, Madam Chair and members of the commission. Peter Gatawski, Community Development Director. Today's agenda item pertains to the Planning Commission geographic representation in the tumlo area. And I want to take a moment to, to provide some, some background. In January of 2022, Les Hudson, who was the chair of the Planning Commission, resigned. He was an at-large member. He served six, six years, uh, and at the time was a, a tumlo area resident. Uh, in coordination with, with the Board of County Commissioners, staff was directed to initiate an at-large recruitment. Uh, there were approximately 10 candidates who applied. I coordinated with the, the chair of the Planning Commission after Les Hudson's resignation, Jessica Kiris. We, uh, took the 10 candidates, uh, or applications and selected, ultimately, there were six. One dropped out. There were five candidates that were ultimately interviewed. There was, as noted in the memorandum, a representative from the tumlo area that was interviewed. But ultimately, the Board of County Commissioners decided to, um, appoint a resident from, who lives in Bend, to fill that at-large, uh, position. And for context, right now, the Planning Commission, uh, consists of the following. There are two at-large members, two members from the Bend area, a representative from Redmond, Sisters, and Southern Deschutes County. So, that's, that's seven candidates. As a result of the board's appointment to fill that at-large position, there was tremendous input from representatives of the tumlo community. Many were frustrated, um, that there wasn't representation on the Planning Commission from tumlo. They, uh, many have, and I think even to this date, still find that they believe that the, uh, Planning Commission's composition, the, the, uh, uh, the filling of the at-large position somehow fouls the Planning Commission composition. And it's been noted, um, by county legal counsel, by Dave Doyle, on several occasions in, in, in public meetings, that the way that Deschutes County Code in, in Chapter 2.52 structures the Planning Commission, to the extent that geographic representation is not meant, does not poison the Planning Commission. So, that's been said repeatedly. It's to, basically, to the extent possible, um, these are the areas of representation that are desired, but to the extent that they are not fulfilled, it doesn't compromise the integrity of the Planning Commission. But I want to underscore that, 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 the testimony or the input that, that has been directed at staff, and certainly to the Board of County Commissioners, is, is acknowledging the important looking ahead of tumlo area representation. And your last agenda item noted that there, um, and it was highlighted by, by Chris Dodi, uh, the number of projects that are happening in tumlo. And there's a genuine interest in, in having representation. So, what staff has done i- in the preparation of this memorandum has provided some, we're looking for guidance. Um, the, the first is whether or not the Board of County Commissioners is interested in revisiting the geographic boundaries of, there's been conversations in the, in the past. If you look at the figure in the memorandum, tumlo area is pretty small. So, I put that in the memorandum to the extent that the board might be interested in, in discussing geographic representation. It's noted in the memo, and I'm going to highlight now, that to the extent that the board at a late, at subsequent meetings in the new year wanted to look at geographic representation, it will, it would influence, um, the second item that I'm going to discuss because, uh, talking about geographic changes in tumlo, especially as you look north, that can, that would impact the Sisters area boundary, as you look at township range and sections, and, and the Redmond area. But the, the other i- uh, item that I highlighted in the memorandum, uh, is, is this opportunity, if the board believes this is an important step to take, is to direct staff to initiate a code amendment to the section of code that pertains to the Planning Commission, to create an ex officio member. This could be done rather expeditiously, as noted in the memorandum. As conceptualized, it would, uh, with a recruitment, or, excuse me, upon the code amendment, uh, being adopted and an expedited recruitment, the recruitment would target an interim ex officio member from the tumlo area. They, that position would serve from the time of appointment to June 30th of 2023, at such time that that position could roll over or convert to a full-time tumlo area appointment for a four-year term. And why is that? I mentioned that, uh, the, the, there was a recent, uh, at-large position that was just filled, but the second at-large position, um, uh, which, there's a community member who lives in Terribon, that position turns out at the end of June. And so, one thought is, again, the ex officio member, that interim appointment to June 30th, it would then roll over and absorb that at-large vacancy, and the at-large vacancy would go away, and it would convert to, to, to the tumlo area, um, representation. The other thing that's, that's notable is, um, we have two, we currently have two Bend area representatives on the Planning Commission. One of them also turns out at the end of June. And the thought was, because of this most recent at-large appointment that occurred last spring, that person lives in Bend, it would, that, that position could convert over to the Bend area, one of the two Bend area openings, and then it would free up what is now one at-large position that could be, a recruitment could be initiated this spring, and, you know, that would allow for others throughout the community, as I mentioned. Uh, one of our commissioners who turns out is from Terribon, that's an at-large position. So, those were, those were, uh, elements that are noted in the memorandum for the board's consideration. Uh, so, uh, I'll, I'll close there. Hopefully, that was helpful for the board, anybody listening online, and, and those that are here in attendance. But I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. I gather you, the, uh, to the, to the chair's discretion, you may also be entertaining input from, from members of the community on this topic. I, I guess I would close by saying, I've looked at the, the minutes from the Planning Commission over the last, uh, they, for decades, going back to, um, the early 90s. I, I didn't see anything in the minutes, and the minutes are admittedly imperfect as they were, they were finalized, but I have not seen any tumlo area appointment. I've been in my, I've been a Deschutes County employee since 2004. I'm not aware of a tumlo area appointment from 2004 to date. That doesn't mean that we haven't had representation from tumlo. As I mentioned, most recently from, from Les Hudson, but I think from, from, and it doesn't diminish the, the sentiments that have genuinely been communicated to staff and the board about the need for a tumlo area Planning Commissioner going forward. I just point out that if you look at the past process as the planning, as, as CDD in coordination with the Board of County Commissioners looked to appoint members, there were times over the last several decades where there wasn't really much interest in the Planning Commission, if you can believe that, based on some of the topics that have been discussed just in today's agenda. But there was a time when there wasn't a lot of interest, and I think that's why the code, which was originally adopted in 1994, was written the way it was, is to try to get maximum geographic representation to the degree possible. If it didn't, if it didn't materialize, the, it ultimately, the commission's composition could be relied upon to provide policy guidance, ultimately, to the Board of County Commissioners on legislative matters. So, Madam Chair, I'll turn it over to you if you have any questions.
I know, I'm looking at the, uh, initial establishment of the Planning Commission, and that was in December of 1967. And that was with, uh, seven members. And then, in, uh, November of 1979, they added nine members. So, then, at some point in time, we went back to the seven. But, um, I thought we were told that originally there were tumlo people, and then in 2010, they, they took it away. There wasn't all this activity. I thought that's what the comments that were made the other day. But you're saying that's not really, I know that there's, someone shall be from tumlo as much, comma, as much as possible. And the, the comma and "as much as possible" doesn't make it required.
My comment was, um, when I started with Deschutes County in 2009, and we had our first opening, it was either in 2009 or 2010, I haven't gone back to look exactly. I remember just checking in with the board in a work session at that time and just said, "We have an opening on the, on the Planning Commission as I review the code." It says, "To the extent possible, we'll have geographic representation." I don't see anybody from tumlo. Do we want to appoint somebody from the tumlo area? Do we want to have, uh, the at-large position? And, and the board's direction at the time was, let's initiate for an at-large position. And, uh, of course, tumlo residents would certainly be welcome and encouraged to apply during that process, um, as would anybody throughout the county. And so, that was the direction that I received at the time. I didn't, prior to that, I didn't, I wasn't aware if we had had a tumlo appointment or not. As Peter and I have gone back and looked, we, we are aware that a couple of tumlo area residents did serve in the early 2000s, from about 2000 to 2006. Now, it appears that they were in the at-large capacity, or the at-large seat, but they were tumlo area residents during that period, so.
I know that Tammy Hardy, I believe she did live in Bend at that time, did she not? So, that, you know, I know she's concerned about tumlo today because she did write us a letter.
Okay.
So, no, I, um, just from the activity, from what's happening in tumlo, I feel like their community does deserve representation. And, um, I don't know how the other commissioners feel, but I feel that what you're suggesting seems, seems to get someone involved in the activity, and then, um, we, you know, we can go from there. But, um, I'm not sure how the other commissioners feel.
Uh, I guess, um, I, we, we've heard from a lot of, uh, people from the tumlo area that they want, uh, they want there to be a tumlo seat on the, on the Planning Commission. I'm supportive of that. Neither of these proposals, uh, taking a careful look at the geographic areas first, or putting someone in an ex officio position, neither of these proposals, neither of these proposals results in a voting member of the Planning Commission before summertime. So, if, you know, and, and my understanding is that's what people want. They want, they want a voting member of the Planning Commission. So, if, if neither of these proposals results in a voting member of the Planning Commission until, until summer, I think that the first approach, like, taking a careful look at the geography and setting up zone, setting up zones that makes sense, both in terms of population and also kind of unincorporated landmass acres, um, that, to achieve, you know, fair, uh, and, and, you know, smart representation across the county. I think that makes, uh, that would be my preference for us to, to do that first. Again, I really don't see a difference between an ex officio member who doesn't have a vote, but, you know, who can attend, you know, right now, anyone who wants to can attend meeting, attend Planning Commission meetings and speak during public comments. So, it's, it's not like there's not an opportunity for non-voting, uh, people to engage with the Planning Commission. So, that's, that, that's my perspective.
Is there anybody in the room that would apply for the tumlo seat?
Okay.
Oh, there we go, yeah. So, that's what I was hoping, there'd be more than one. I mean, and, you know, I figured there was at least one here.
So, we do have a couple of people that would like to testify. They, um, I just feel like it would, it would be good to hear from them, um, this morning. But be aware that three minutes is your limit. And then, the other thing that I wanted, I'll make note, is that I was really surprised when I went back to look up when Les, Les Hudson was appointed, because I was sure he was tumlo, and he wasn't. He was at-large, and yet, you know, um, it, it was quite shocking. We went back, I looked at the minutes from like, what was it, 2016 or something, when he first came on board? So, um, I was personally very surprised because I, I see what is happening in tumlo on a daily basis, and I recognize that you, you do want your representation. daily basis, and I recognize that you, you do want your representation. So, Peter, would it be okay if we just ask?
Of course.
We do have our timer. Jessica, would you like to be first, because you are representing the Planning Commission? Thanks for coming this morning.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so I'm Jessica Kiris. I live north of Tumalo, in between Redmond and Sisters, and I am the current Chair of the Planning Commission. I came to just make a couple of comments for you guys to consider, but also my fellow members of the public. So, what the Planning Commission is composed of is just ordinary citizens. We don't work for the county. We aren't elected. We're just, you know, like everyone here, concerned citizens who really want to get involved in our communities and the county as a whole. Some of the projects we've been working on are, we had a couple of public hearings regarding accessory dwelling units in the county, psilocybin, time, place, and manner. We are, we've got a couple of items on our agenda coming up about housekeeping amendments, an update on the comprehensive plan, and of course, we're going to have a public hearing on ham radio tower height coming up. So, these are, these are some items I think would be of interest to some of the people sitting behind me, who are really interested in participating in county land use issues. Commissioner Chang's correct? Anyone is welcome to come to our meetings. We do have an item, just like you all do at the beginning, for public comment, not on the agenda, but since I'm the Chair, I also, to the extent possible with time, try to involve people who come to the meetings in the agenda items, because we are the Citizen Involvement Committee, and we really want to know what people think. Our conversations are a lot richer when many people of the public are involved, not just the people who are currently appointed. So, for people interested in what we do, you don't actually need a board appointment to come to the meeting and participate and give your input. You can just come at our very next meeting, which will be the second Thursday in January. So, in.
What time is that?
It starts at 5:30.
5:30 to what, 7:30 or something?
Um, it depends.
Or midnight.
We have a hard cutoff at nine.
Oh, nine.
But we try to get done by 8:30. Sometimes we just don't have a full agenda, so we get done before. So, I did ask the Planning Commission for their thoughts on what it would mean to have a non-voting member present. The, the commission was very much in favor of waiting until our normal appointment process to welcome a new member. We, people sort of ranged in how strongly they felt about that, but mostly, it seemed like everyone wanted the public to know that, you know, we're all members of the public, let's just get together and talk about things. So, anyone who wants to participate on things happening now, between now and June, are welcome to just come on over and be a part of things. So, I think that's about it. Do you guys have any questions for me?
That's your three minutes. Very good.
Well, thank you for what you do, though. So, I mean, these meetings can be pretty, you know, pretty interesting, some topics, I'm sure you think about it between the meetings too, right, and talking to people, but thanks for chairing the operation also.
Thank you so much for being a citizen volunteer who really cares about planning and land use and growth issues in our community, and is engaging in a proactive way to, to help us, to advise the Board of Commissioners on how to work through those issues.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica, for spending the morning. Thank you. Is it Deborah Tsai? She, okay, all right, so it's not here. All right, and Jeannie, you did sign up? Did you want to add anything? And you only have three minutes. Three minutes, Jeannie.
It was 10 minutes last time.
Very good.
So, I did good. Again, Jeannie Fraley, 64790 Bruce. And yes, so, yeah, you know, I hate to keep beating a dead horse, but it does.
You're not supposed to use that term anymore.
Oh, a live horse, sorry. Okay.
Don't beat live horses, though, either.
Leading the live horse to the water and trying to get it to break.
Oh, there we go, lead him to the water.
So, anyway, yeah, I look at it like, the code still states that there should be or shall be someone from Tumalo, but as I look at that, I look at this whole thing needing to be changed, actually. So, and I realize that Terabon doesn't have a represent, representation either. And I feel like both communities are growing, you know, getting larger, and Terabon, oh my gosh, Crooked River Ranch and all of that area would be involved in Terabon. So, when it was stated that in 1979, there were nine people on the Planning Commission, I would like to propose that we bring that back, and we bring that back soon. So, which would eliminate that problem of not having someone who can vote for the Tumalo area, well, actually, on the Planning Commission in, for the whole, right, but representing the Tumalo area. But that would also add one that would represent the Terabon area, and then we would just have one at-large member. So, I don't know if that would work to have one at-large or not, you know, but that's just my thought. I want to thank Jessica for her insight in bringing that up to us as well, because I don't know very much, as I said, about all of this stuff. But, yeah, it's like, you know, I see it as a code violation of not being filled was, as what the code states. I could be wrong. I, you know, as far as I know, no one's been able to find when they said that they supposedly changed it to where Tumalo doesn't have to have representation from that, because it still states on the code. So, to me, that's an issue, and it needs to be addressed. But, yeah, I would, I would really like to see that changed back to what it was in 1979. We have growth, we need more people. It's like, obviously, Bend probably needs more people on that as well, just to, and I don't know how that would work at meetings, would that be too much, having too many people? I do not know. But I think that we do, you know, we need, we need to consider that and have representation, as I believe you guys all feel the same way as I do. So, anyway, any questions for me, or you're good?
You're good.
All right.
And I did it. What you just said is, you know, you need to have more representation from that. That's exactly why I'm, I think we need to revisit, we need to revisit the zones and think about both population and acreage of unincorporated county.
Definitely. So, yeah, I think that would be really good. So, yeah, revisit and look at adding more, you know, just so that, because our population has grown so much since 1979, oh my gosh, you know, and, and be able to accommodate all of that, and have some different voices in there, and some opinions and things, and.
I just want to thank Jack Farley for giving me that, that documentation from 79, so. We'll have to go ahead.
So, just, when we were doing our recruiting the last two times, it was like crickets. We were trying to find people, we were publishing requests for people to apply, and it just turned a corner, just recently, and now there's a lot of excitement and engagement in this request. But I'm just pointing out, just a year and a half ago, it's like we couldn't get people to even answer the phone on this topic. It was just amazing.
COVID had a lot to do with stuff, so people were scared, people were like, you know.
Yeah, so it just feels different now.
It does, it does, and I think it's good. I, I think it's really good that people are engaging and, you know, coming forward and wanting to be involved. We need more involvement as the community in a whole, so anyways.
Great.
Thank you, guys.
Coming off of, coming off of that, that request, I would, I'd love to ask the Community Development Department to do a little research on other large population counties to, to see, you know, the counties that are around our size, how many Planning Commissioners do they have? I mean, I know that there, you know, that, that Planning Commissions are also different in other places where they actually have, you know, land use hearing type, like, like functions, but it would be useful to know what, what the, what this, you know, what some of our, our peers in terms of population size are doing.
Yes, that would.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Because this is the last meeting that I will be chairing, I, I thought, because people were in, from your community, and you, you need your voices to be heard. I had talked to Tammy Hardy last night, and I tell her, no, Tammy, you need to send an email in, but she's actually, did send us a letter, and she is on Zoom, so I want to recognize her. Stefan, if you could bring Tammy in? Tammy, what, do we know what name she's under?
She might have been on an hour ago or something.
You don't see her? Let me, let me see if I can send her a text.
She's going on the phone.
She's on the phone now?
Looks like Jack Farley may be interested in speaking on this subject.
He knows how to fill a blue form out, though.
There you go.
Remember, Jack? Please? It's for the permanent record.
I thought it was not on the agenda, so.
Well, I know, that's, I changed the rules today. Don't hold it against me.
This is to discuss at another time, but it is, it is a little unusual that public comment is for items that are not on the agenda.
She's having trouble with Zoom, so she's going to call. Has she called yet?
I didn't see her number on there. It looks like she was maybe trying to connect.
Oh, she's calling me. Okay. Well, Tammy? Let me get you on speaker. Okay.
I'm having a little trouble with my internet.
Okay, you're on speaker. Can everyone in the room hear it now? Okay, everyone can hear you, Tammy, so say nice things.
Maybe hold it up to the microphone.
I think there was a miscommunication last night when I talked with Patty. She said I wouldn't be able to testify, so I didn't come, but submitted some comments in writing. So, I would like to take that opportunity to, to talk about that.
You may. I changed the rules, Tammy. It's my last meeting as Chair, so please don't hold it against me.
No, no, I don't, but I've been listening in, so I do want to read at least what I wrote down, and I appreciate the fact that you're considering putting someone on the Planning Commission from Tumalo. We, the community has been really, cares deeply about what we do and what's happening in Tumalo, and want to be involved in shaping our future. I know that there was some discussion about previous Planning Commissions, Commissioners from Tumalo. When I served in 2000 through 2006, I represented the Bend area, because I lived in Bend, but we did have, the Chair of the Commission at that time was from Bend. Bruce, I'll be darned if I can remember his last name, but I know that Tumalo has been represented pretty consistently in the past, but not recently. One of my concerns that's been a bone of contention is that the current code talks about one member from the Tumalo area in the current code, and I don't find any, anything from the past that would have changed that. So, I think the reason that the Tumalo community is so upset is that it calls for a Tumalo Planning Commission member from Tumalo, and on the last recruitment for the at-large position, two of us had applied, and I think Jack was interviewed but not selected, and at the time, I had also applied and had not been considered. I currently reside in Tumalo. That's probably a whole nother discussion, but anyway, there's been quite a bit of interest in Tumalo, and important that we have a voting position there, and it's confusing to the public when the code currently states that there shall be a member from Tumalo, and we very much want representation, especially with all of the things that are going on right now in Tumalo. So, kind of reiterating that, and the confusion was the fact that it does state in the current code that Tumalo shall be represented, and it was possible, as you had two applicants at the last at-large position. So, that also, I wanted to clarify from what the staff report says, what, there were two applicants from the Tumalo area, the last at-large recruitment. And that the code also says there should be, or there is one at-large position. So, the Tumalo community wants and supports a fully functioning Planning Commissioner from Tumalo. It's important that this position be a voting position. There's much going on in Tumalo at this time, and we want to voice in shaping the recommendations that will be made to the County Commissioners. We do support a look at the geographical area that makes up Tumalo, but that's not as pressing as getting a voting representative on the Planning Commission right away.
Okay, Tammy, Tammy, thank you. That is your three minutes, and I, we do appreciate your letter, too. So, thank you so much for calling in, and I'm sure we will, we will be talking to you in the near future.
Yeah, and I appreciate the opportunity and all the work that you guys do for us, so thank you so much.
You're welcome. It's our pleasure. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay.
Bye. Okay, Jack?
Hi. As you know, my name's Jack Farley. I'm from Tumalo, I'm also on the Tumalo Irrigation District Board. I've also been an applicant for the last two positions, with the at-large position and also the most recent Sisters position. What I'd like to say first is that the discussion regarding, well, there's always a place open at the Commission, at the Planning Commission, for members of the public to show up and speak. I would submit that it's very difficult, because the rules are the same as here, in that you have the public comments at the beginning on things not on the agenda, and so you're limited to speak up about things that aren't the focus of the meeting, and so it's quite a limited position, you know. Just, just for the record, I've been to every Planning Commission meeting this year, and I've sat quietly and listened, and have spoken up for the public comments a couple times. But again, it's just a small piece in the beginning, not really relevant. I was very pleased when this most recent one, a couple years, a couple, excuse me, weeks ago, the Commissioner, Tiara, she did invite me to speak on things on the agenda, and I was elated, and I think I had the opportunity and did speak up on a couple issues. My feeling is, regarding voting or, or ex officio, it's a little less important to me that I'm a voting issue. I'm more interested in speaking up on issues that I have a, I have a perspective that has not been voiced. I have a point, I have opinions that, that I think are, as a Tumalo resident, that are relevant to the discussion. So, I was very pleased when she invited me to speak. What I'd like to say is that I understand that it's difficult to get people in the Commission, and I was very surprised when I saw this position that was from Tumalo that was created in 1994. I can't imagine there was an outcry for Tumalo at that point, and I can imagine over the, over the years, it has become difficult to honor that, that seat. And so, I went back over all the minutes from 1994, believe it or not, trying to find out when that was changed. Couldn't find it, but what I could find was the first mention that I could find of, of a second at-large seat was, was in this report for the airport in 2008, says two at-large seats. So, but what I can tell you, I was looking at the minutes from both the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners, I can find no reference to a decision to change the geographic seat of Tumalo to a second at-large seat. And what I'd like, what I'd like to say is that there's an unintended consequence. When you remove that rectangle from consideration as defined geographically, you remove that, those folks from any home district, so that the only time they can apply for a seat on the, on the Commission is when an at-large seat comes up, because it is defined geographically. So, in other words, for instance, when I applied for Sisters, the Community Development Director said, no, you can't apply, because you don't qualify geographically. So, I would submit, I can't, or someone from Tumalo, that district cannot apply ever when it comes to a geographic seat. They have to wait till an at-large seat opens up, and at that point, you only have half the opportunity as anyone else in the whole county, because that's the only area that doesn't have a geographic home district. So, half the opportunity, and at that point, you have to compete against the whole county, which is what happened with the most recent at-large seat. There was a large amount of applicants, and I was the, the person from Tumalo who got an interview, and, you know, I was bested by another candidate, which is okay. I'm just saying that folks in that rectangle have less opportunity, and at this time when it's so important, Tumalo issues, I think it's most important now that we, we have representation. That's really all I have to say.
Thank you, Jack. Your time is up, and I appreciate you stepping up and representing your community in what you just said. So, thank you for making that into the record.
So, I support thinking of the Bend Area seats as in. So I support thinking of the Bend area seats as including Tumalo, and I don't know if our code is pretty black and white on that or not, but, I mean, if we had an open Bend area seat, I would support interviewing and possibly appointing for that. So that would give two chances. And, you know, Jack's right, if, you know, if there's a Tumalo area seat, but it never comes open as a specific ask, that's, that's an interesting situation. So I'm just pointing out that I would support that, you know, Bend area seat also being an opportunity for a Tumalo appointment, but then also, at this time, just getting to the recruiting process for the expired seats that are coming up.
The, I mean, the Bend Metropolitan Planning Organization geography includes Tumalo, so I mean, that, that seems appropriate to me. Although, if we do this, you know, if we do this look at the population and geographies again, you know, maybe it makes sense to have like a, a North Bend and a South Bend, yeah, seats, and a Tumalo seat, and, you know, a couple of others.
And I support bringing in, yeah, that as a project, you know, let's do it as a code, a proposed code amendment, and however that would happen. So I mean, I'm not opposed to that, so let's schedule that up, yeah.
I think going back to '09 might be really appropriate for.
Well, as I say, yeah, let's open up that whole discussion in the next year, whatever, whatever that looks like.
Sooner rather than later, so that we get this, this lack of representation, as Jack has pointed out, addressed.
So what I'll do, Commissioners, is early in the new year, I'll, we'll schedule an agenda item that evaluates the geography, that looks at concepts for broadening the number of Commissioners, in light of some comparable examples. And then based on that input, if we're, if, if there's enough suitable options that can be drawn upon, then the Board could provide direction to staff to amend the code, to reflect those geographic changes, you know, different sub areas, and then once, we go through the amendment process, it's not a land use proceeding, so it would go straight to the Board of County Commissioners. And then, and then staff would work with, once that amendment is adopted, then there would, there's gonna be a series of recruitments that will go out to get the Planning Commission's composition, where it meets the Board's expectations, and that would likely be in alignment in like late spring and early summer at the latest.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you for that, and we're gonna take a quick break.
Also, just one last thought. So for a work plan, an annual work plan is where the, the topics are discussed, and there's tables of proposed work plan items, optional work plan items. So please, if you're not up to speed on that, go look back at the annual work plan of the Planning Commission, the topics. And what I've, what I've perceived is, is that, well, you know, we're Tumalo, we want this, we want that, we don't want something. And there may not, this may not be the domain you're expecting it to be. So I mean, please do your homework on that. When we talk about the height of a ham tower countywide, you know, that's, that's what we're gonna ask you to study. It's not gonna be opposing somebody's sewer issue. So I've just, make sure you understand they're separate. They're different issues.
If you have, if you have questions about the Planning Commission, please feel free to reach out to me. I'm happy to put it in the contacts and talk about the work plan, so that's a great point, Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Chair, if we can just have a, a brief break, because we have chiefs that are ready to come in, and they need to, yeah, perfect. Okay.
Brief break.
I know, I've totally messed up. Chris and Tom, would you like to do your presentation? Item number 12 on our agenda.
Hello, Commissioners. I'm Tom Kuhn, Dushuts County employee at Health Services, but I also serve as our Ambulance Service Area Administrator, or as we refer to as ASA.
Jared Jeffcotten, Chair of the ASA Committee.
I'm Chris Bell, Assistant, Senior Assistant County Counsel.
And we also have a couple other members of the ASA Committee here in the audience with us as well.
Do you wanna identify them?
Yeah, why don't we, if you could say your name and agency you represent?
Drew Norris, I'm with Ben Fire.
Thank you.
Jared Ernest, Black View Park.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right, so the Dushuts County Ambulance Service Area Committee and Dushuts County Board of County Commissioners are authorized to investigate any alleged violations of the County Code, Chapter 8.3, and its company ambulance service area plan. So that's what we are charged with. If the Board determines that a franchisee has willingly violated applicable local laws or regulations such as the code or plan, or state or federal laws or regulations, the Board may take action, which may include up to revoking or suspending the assignment of a franchise to a franchisee. On September 28th, 2022, the ASA Committee adopted findings arising from its investigation into the allegations made against Lepine Rural Fire Protection District, and complaints from St. Charles Health System and Lepine Community Health Center. The allegations made in these complaints were distilled into five primary allegations by the Committee, each of which alleged that the district had violated Chapter 8.3 of the Dushuts County Code and provisions of the ASA Plan. After its investigation, the Committee substantiated two of these five allegations. And what I'd like to do at this time is just state for the record what the allegations are, what the finding is, what, by the Committee, and then if it's okay, if we could hold off on questions until after I run through that.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Allegation number one, the district discouraged patients from utilizing the district for emergency transports. The Committee felt that this finding was substantiated. The district, allegation two, the district provided inaccurate determinations about whether emergency transportation was necessary for patients in order to support the fees it charged to St. Charles and Lepine Community Health Center. The Committee found that this was not substantiated. The fees charged to St. Charles and Lepine Community Health Center pursuant to District Ordinance 2019-03 and Policy 0203 were invalid, and the Committee found this to be substantiated. The next one, allegation four, the district is currently unable to meet the ASA franchise requirements. We felt this was, or the Committee felt this was not substantiated. And allegation five, there are, there are documentation discrepancies between St. Charles and Lepine Community Health Center provider chart notes, and the chart notes of the district concerning the patients who are transported by the district. We felt this was not substantiated. It's the desire of the ASA Committee for Lepine Rural Fire Protection District Emergency Medical Services to come into compliance with the ASA County Code and Plan. At this time, we ask that the Commissioners consider this information and direct staff in the Committee and how to proceed as needed, as well as, please let us know if you have any questions at this time. Thank you.
A bit of clarification for you, when you say "we" as Dushuts County ASA Administrator, are you taking a position?
No, I, I, that was, on error, said "we," just because.
So it's the members of the Committee, and you're the Administrator of it.
Yes, correct.
Yeah, so just, just making sure.
No, that's a good, good point to clarify.
Yeah, so now, I'm, I'm intimately involved with many aspects of this. Just about every naming here, I know, you know, even the, the interviews and the patients and the parties on all sides, so, you know, I'm comfortable in, in helping this, this move forward, so we'll work together what the decisions are here. Another note, you know, there's, up in Morrow County, there was a big issue, something like this. I don't, I didn't look into the details of it, but this isn't the only place that, that there's issues with the ambulance service area in this state, so I kinda, I just have that in, in my mindset here. So, for clarity and decision, so the substantiated and unsubstantiated, you know, I would agree with those positions generally. I mean, as a starting point, so maybe Chris can help, or if there's any other thoughts or questions. What do we put direction to today, or do we accept, once we accept these, this is the, kind of the black and white of the, the situation?
Sure, it's, it's the Committees, and, and my understanding that, you know, way back when, when the investigation started, the request from the Board was that the ASA Advisory Committee perform an investigation and come to findings, present the findings to you, and then any follow-up necessary under the Code, the ASA Plan, would be essentially a decision of the Board. So you now have the findings from the Committee, and so now, what the, both the ASA Plan, specifically in Section 8.4 of the Plan, I believe, and the Dushuts County Code, Chapter 8.30 of the Plan, they provide sort of a path forward for the Board, once the findings are received with the Committee. The, the Board can accept those findings and then proceed on the path to ensure compliance and/or sanction the district, the Pine Fire, as it sees fit. I believe the, the, both ASA Plan and the ordinance itself, or, or, excuse me, Chapter 8.30, kind of allow the Board to impose a sanction or wait and kind of allow time for the district to come into compliance with the, the Code and the Plan, given the findings that there have been violations of both, that there have been two violations. So with the, with the, both the Chapter 8.30 of the Code and the ASA Plan say is that the next steps after getting, obtaining the findings from the, the Committee are to provide written notice of violation to the district of the Committee's findings, and that those, that notice should at least include a specification and a brief explanation of the violations found by the Committee, the actions necessary to correct the violation, the date by which the action must be taken. And again, that is assuming, from my reading, that the, the Board allows an opportunity to cure the violation. The Board must also provide an opportunity for the district to request, an opportunity for a hearing on the Committee's findings, and time to provide a hearing if the district so requests. Given the, the findings in which the Committee sustained two of the allegations from St. Charles and the Lepine Community Health Clinic, and found violations of the ASA Plan and/or the County Code, again, I guess, the Committee and Tom and I are requesting instruction on whether to proceed as provided in the ASA Plan and Chapter 8.30 of the County Code, or to proceed in some other fashion. So I suppose the motion that we would be looking for is to move to have staff, which can include legal staff, or someone from administrative to provide a written notice of violation, assuming that the Board wants to provide such an opportunity. assuming that the Board wants to provide such an opportunity and an opportunity to cure such violations and an opportunity to request a hearing on the findings of the Committee, all in accordance with Chapter 8.30 of the County Code and the relevant provisions of the ASA Plan. So essentially what I think the motion would ask for is just to direct staff to provide written notice, including all the components that are required under both the Chapter 8.30 and the ASA Plan. That notice itself would provide a requisite amount of time within which the district could request a hearing. I think that's all that's necessary for now. Once that runs its course, whether or not the district requests a hearing, then we would probably meet again to set up the hearing and kind of figure out what that requires and talk about that, and then move forward from there. At this point, though, I think what is required is that, again, the district be provided the requisite notice, an explanation of what the findings are, and then an opportunity for a hearing.
So is a hearing then standard procedure in this case, Chris?
Well, that's certainly what's contemplated under the ASA Plan. Both the ASA Plan and the, and Chapter 8.30 have provisions providing for a hearing if it's requested.
If they request it.
Yeah, I mean, whether that's standard or not, it's certainly written down, but I don't believe that's ever happened before. And so at this point, we're kind of pioneering a new path that's never been trodden before, but that is actually laid out and required in both the ASA Plan and the, in the Chapter 8.30. So I think, you know, in all respects, it would probably be similar to, if not identical, to previous hearings where the Board has appeared in its quasi judicial capacity to, you know, basically be a fact finder and, if necessary, you know, impose requisite sanctions or remedial measures as spelled out in both documents.
I'm in favor of proceeding with a written notice detailing the findings and inviting the Lapine Fire to come to a hearing, or to have a hearing if they'd like. In terms of, you know, actions or sanctions, I, I'm not sure how prescriptive or detailed we want to be, but I do think it's important to convey to them that these violations should be remedied, that, you know, that changes should be made so that these are not, these are no longer issues. And, you know, it might not need to be any more specific than that, from my perspective, until we get to a hearing if they, if they so choose that, but...
So apparently there were, what, 31 people that were billed? And they've stopped doing that, I'm presuming?
So there, the record that the Committee investigated contains, if I'm not mistaken, 31 invoices, where the district, Lapine Fire, billed, not the patient, but billed the facilities, so either...
Right.
Either of the two clinics. My understanding is, and I'm not too sure about this, but I believe of the 31 invoices, Judge Bagley's order, which is also noted in the findings, basically invalidated those invoices. So in essence, to a degree, as to those invoices, I believe Lapine Fire is not, has not continued to try and enforce those invoices. But there are other invoices outstanding, and there are, you know, it's also my understanding that the ordinance upon which those invoices were based has since been rescinded by Lapine Fire, and they have imposed, or excuse me, imposed, they've passed a new ordinance which allows for similar charges, again, to the facilities. That actually was not a basis for the investigation, in that the allegations contained in the complaints from both St. Charles and Lapine Community Health, they didn't specify those as far as a basis for the investigation. However, given the, you know, the nature of the notice and the opportunity to cure, that may impact Lapine Fire's, you know, ability or desire to move forward or to continue under that ordinance or not. That's, that's a decision that they might have to make, or that's kind of left open. But, and the Committee members that are here are free to speak to this as well. My understanding is the Committee members felt like that was, you know, they were given a certain set of facts, a basis for their investigation, and they sort of stuck to that. And, you know, that's kind of what the basis for the investigation was.
Commissioner Dare, in regards to whether they're still billing or not, we do have representatives from Lapine Community Health Center. I don't know if they're comfortable commenting on it.
Yeah, we are. Yeah, we are still being billed.
Do you want to identify yourself?
We're all on Zoom now.
Yes, please, thank you, thank you Courtney.
Hello.
Introduce.
I am Courtney Agnesito. I am the Executive Support and Communications Manager for Lapine Community Health Center. I've been involved from day one of Ordinance 2019-03, which, as they said, is invalid, or not invalid, it is rescinded, and there is a new ordinance in place. The difference between the two, because we are being billed still, but the difference between the two ordinances is that the former considered whether the district felt that the call was emergent or non-emergent. The new ordinance says if we call, they bill, regardless of what the call is for. So we are now being billed for every invoice. We are still in litigation about the Ordinance 2019-03, which is what is called out in this investigation. And so while Judge Bagley has ruled that the charges were invalid, the district is still attempting to recoup those charges. So we are kind of in a back and forth and allowing time for the district to continue appealing. So right now, they're in a 30-day process, and they have a period to appeal the last ruling. And we are in a tolling agreement. So while we are receiving invoices, we aren't having to do anything with them at this time. So we just receive them, take note. We don't have to appeal to the district at this time until litigation is complete, and then we will have to either appeal or they will be invalid at that time.
I'd like to, I mean, I'm not sure if the members of the ASA Committee are able to comment on this, but, you know, essentially, if Lapine Community Health, you know, as the dust settles on these other questions, if Lapine Community Health Clinic files a new complaint relating to the charges that are being applied under the second ordinance, would, would you basically have a similar finding? That that complaint was substantiated?
Yes, based on the last ordinance, it was declared invalid, it would be the same outcome.
So, I mean, a few minutes ago, I just said, you know, maybe in this, in this first letter, written notice, we don't have to be too detailed, but it seems like eventually we want to get to the point where we, we say it's probably a good idea to rescind the second ordinance as well.
That would be correct.
Yeah, I would say that the, you know, the second ordinance was not part of this investigation. So I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Jared, but I think that, you know, if the Committee received another complaint or the Board received another complaint, an investigation would be performed into that ordinance. Given the nature of, you know, the Committee's finding with regard to the 2019-03 ordinance, you know, based on, you know, it's in the findings that the ordinance was invalidated. The Committee found that it was invalid based upon the statute which empowers fire districts such as Lapine Fire to charge fees for services provided. There's case law, which is, this is all cited in the, in the findings, that basically says that transaction is between the ambulance provider and the patient, and that it's a fee for a service, and the person receiving that service is the patient. So that is who needs to be billed for that service. Given, again, that there has not been an investigation into that ordinance, the new ordinance and how it operates, you know, it's a little premature to say whether or not the Committee, if they did an investigation, would find one way or another. But given the nature of the Committee's finding on this ordinance, it certainly could be an outcome that the new ordinance would be invalidated as well, on the same grounds.
Actually, I'm more concerned with the first issue where it was substantiated, discouraging patients from utilizing the transport. Are we hearing, is that still happening? I mean, I read those cases, and it was really medically, to me, inappropriate what they were doing. So have they changed their ways regarding that? Do we have any idea? I mean, it seemed incredibly serious to me. I was, yeah.
I can speak to that. So the, some of the situations, at least where they involved Lapine Community Health Center and our providers, we were hearing this from our patients, and so it was up to the provider to then pass that on to us. I can certainly check in and see if that's still being heard, but I have not heard anything directly from the community on this.
Okay, that's, that's good to know, because I just was like, oh my gosh. I'm reading it to my husband, the retired doctor.
I know that they are certainly receiving a lot of calls, and so I know that they're doing a lot of runs, and they're certainly keeping their hands full. But whether or not they're discouraging the use of their ambulance services, I do not know.
Okay, thank you Courtney.
Yeah, for clarification, I mean, again, the investigation and the findings of the investigation are based upon statements made by the two individuals from the community, and also statements from both Oliver Tatum from St. Charles-Lapine and from Charlotte Haight from Lapine Community Health. I think the findings reflected that while the story relayed by Mr. Tatum, you know, had some concerning issues, I believe the Committee found that, you know, there probably wasn't sufficient information on that one to definitively say that that involved active discouragement, although there certainly could have been. There just wasn't enough evidence for the, for the Committee to find that, for that particular example. But I think the Committee did find there was credibility and that there was a lot of sort of similarities between the stories of the two folks from the Committee that were interviewed. There, I believe there was a third community member interviewed as well, but, and what Mr. Haight had stated, that she had heard and observed. And so I think based upon those stories and that sort of credibility, where they, they were very consistent with each other, my recollection is that's kind of what the Committee really honed in on in order to justify that finding. Whether or not it's still going on, I don't think that the Committee has any additional evidence on that.
Okay.
Well, when we, when we say we want the violations to be remedied, maybe we can say it in a kind of forward-looking kind of way. You know, that we, we do not want to see these, you know, you know, we want, we want these, we do not want these issues to occur in the future. And I, you, yeah. When you're sitting at your desk, you can probably come up with much better language than I can on the fly. But, you know, take a forward-looking approach to this and say that we do not want violations like this to be occurring in the future.
So as I say, I do support substantiating the two items, and then there's, there is a huge disconnect about doing the service. And, you know, this, I don't know how far we want to get into it today, but I know as a taxpaying member of this district, we tax ourselves for fire service. Ambulance service is supposed to be a fee for service, community service. So however many times they run, it pays for that ambulance. There's only one set of staff, the staff that either goes to a fire or is on the ambulance. There's not an extra set of staff for a fire if there's people out there running. Clinics open up and provide medical services to our community. There's a scenario there. I don't feel well, I've chosen to get up, get in a vehicle, drive to the clinic for medical services. I've already made a choice not to call 911. You get there and the doctor says, oh, this is a pretty bad situation. How about we get you an emergency transport? Okay, you know, there was already a choice when I left my house not to do that. So I'm just pointing out these scenarios. It's, it gets pretty interesting in there. So then, we have two clinics that open up in town, which is wonderful. Let's do great work for people. But, you know, two clinics, and it compounds. So then the run happens. A run is reimbursed for $600 for Medicare/Medicaid. Not all runs are like that, but the run, and it's in here, run costs $2,000, $2,500. So then there's this call that comes from a facility that I've already chosen not to call 911. So, I mean, there's some interesting justifications of why the district even did what they did. And it took me a while to figure this out, because when I first heard of this, I'm like, what's going on? This is ridiculous. But it doesn't scale. Then we change our ASA for the CMT, a private company, to be on the run card. CMT can't even staff a rig to show up. So, and that would have been about a $600 run. So, man, this is an interesting one. And I, I mean, I, black and white of it is, we can't support, I don't support, you know, sending the bills to the, to the clinics. It's not the way this is set up. But what is the future in this whole medical scenario? I don't know, we're gonna have to, you know, work together as a community on this. And what is the expectation as a patient? You know, you're living 30, 40 miles away from a hospital, and, well, I don't feel well, and maybe, you know, I need to be at the doctor right now.
Well, someone who's...
So there's reasons why we're here. There's reasons why we're here.
No, but somebody did, one of the appendectomy case, they actually called, they told 911 they wanted an ambulance to take them. They knew they had that issue. You know, it definitely, we don't want these things, we want better medical care for our South County. And I think we want the recognition, and I think it's incredibly important that the letter is firm enough, that they understand what has, what has happened, and we don't want to hear this, any kind of stories in the future. And, you know, sometimes maybe things are...
But so remember, I mean, Lapine Fire could say, okay, well, we can't do ambulances anymore. I mean, we're on the verge of that, okay? And then CMT doesn't have staff either. The, I talked to the staff there, and they're understaffed, just like 911, too, and they, they can't get folks. So there's just a lot of moving parts to this. There's no easy solution.
Well, this was from, what, '21? This was from, were things that bad in '21?
It's been getting worse ever since.
Well, yeah, I know, that's what I mean. But they weren't that bad in '21 when these issues are brought up. So that's why, you know, I think we, we have to do what we have to do in order to keep people safe. And CMT, is there any way we can put more pressure on them? They did sign a contract, didn't they?
But they're not required. I mean, they want to be available, but if they can't be available, it can't be available.
Yeah, it's based on available staffing, and they, like everyone else in the industry, are having staffing issues.
I mean, I would frame this whole issue around, around cost. I mean, it, everybody, the community, the fire district, the clinics, everyone wants timely, professional medical transport and emergency transport when it's needed. But that's expensive. And I feel like the, you know, essentially, Lapine Fire has, you know, tried some creative ways, you know, this, the subcontracting with CMT, they've tried some creative ways of containing the cost and, and containing the cost and figuring out, you know, how to pay for those costs. But we are learning that, that, you know, some of those creative ideas are, are, you know, in violation of their ASA agreement. And that points us back to the question of, people want timely, professional medical transport and emergency transport, and how do we pay for that? So that, that's the, I mean, that would be what I would expect to be the really hard question that Lapine Fire has to, has to face at this point. And, you know, I don't envy them having to... And, you know, I don't envy them having to grapple with that. But it is, it is, it's their problem to solve. I mean, you know, if they decide there is no way that we can do this with the district's levy that we have, then they give it, you know, they surrender the ASA, this ASA franchise, and we go out and find someone else to do it. And there's another, there's a new organization that emerges in the area. Yeah, and that's, you know, that's not fun either. That probably comes with additional taxes, too. But, you know, people want timely, professional medical transport and emergency transport, and somebody's got to pay for it.
Well, and you've mentioned taxes. Is it a fee for a service or not? So that's, yeah. So, and I'm just pointing out that it doesn't have to just be taxes, it's a fee for a service.
Sure, but, I mean, it sure seems, you know, people get billed for a medical transport, but there's an entire infrastructure associated with having ambulances and a station that ambulances come from and people. And, you know, when there is a charge for, you know, when there's a charge for an ambulance ride, I, you know, members of the ASA committee could comment better. Like, I don't know of whether all of that overhead cost is being effectively addressed by the charges for the, that specific ride or whether it covers some of the cost of having an ambulance service.
I can answer a little bit of that. If you're talking about Medicare or Medicaid reimbursement, it does not cover the entire cost of the transport. Private insurance pay does, as long as the agency is billing the correct amount for the entire transport. You talked about other counties that are having some of the same problems. Baker County is one of those currently. Their only ambulance provider was Baker City Fire. Baker City Fire decided to get out of the business. So Baker County had to send out an RFP for ambulance providers. The first one they had was AMR out of the Portland metro area, who charged them, I believe it was $4,000 a day, plus $500 per transport on top of what they were charging the patients.
So the county was, the county or the city was being charged that?
Correct.
They could charge all that, and then they could, and they could charge the patient, too.
Correct. Because they told the county for us to come in there and provide emergency transport, you're gonna have to pay us.
So that's the overhead, the sunk cost of having, having service.
Correct.
Okay. So as I say, we've got violations and they're substantiated, but man, there's a bigger picture here.
There is.
Do we see these issues anywhere else in Deschutes County on this kind of a level, Tom?
None that has been brought to my attention and has never been brought to my attention.
Never?
Hmm.
Okay.
So are we concluding with a motion today or just is this discussion enough for direction?
I think as long as, if you grant the motion to instruct staff to proceed with the notice of violation as kind of described.
Okay. Understood.
Okay.
So as I say, I'm gonna support this, you know, district discouraging patients from utilizing the district for emergency transports. You know, they're the professionals and, you know, they're trying to maybe point out, I mean, I don't know, that's their domain. I can't even speak in that domain. So I support the concept of it being substantiated, but there's reasons for it, too. So I'm just putting it on the record. Reasons from their point of view is what I'm acknowledging. But with that, I'll move, accepting the recommendations and supporting the five positions on these items and directing staff to notify the district. That works?
Are you going to say in the letter, then, of the three that are unsubstantiated? Are you gonna let them know the good news?
Yeah, so I was supporting the position on all five of those is what the motion was.
Yes, we can draft the notice to include that.
Okay, that's, that's the good news, okay. Is there a second to that?
Well, I guess what I, one question I want to ask before I second is, do we want to see a draft before this written notice goes out? Or do we want to just instruct staff to send it?
Well, I mean, this is the content, it's not gonna be any different, I can't imagine. This, getting to this point was the big push. I mean, these are the facts, this is the backup, this is everything. So a letter saying that this is our position is what I'm envisioning.
Well, I, I mean, I, I think one of the things we want to deal with and we want to decide how we want a message is, is the remedy of the violations, you know, that we were talking about, you know, we want, we want, you know, I would like to see language in here that is forward-looking, that says, you know, these violations will be remedied and you'll adjust your system so that, you know, there are not violations like this in the future.
So I was thinking there was another step after this notification that would be that. Or are we there? I don't know.
I can certainly provide a draft of a proposed notice to the board for your review to make sure that it contains the language and, you know, the opportunity to cure the violations that you all would wish to have communicated to them.
Okay, yeah, it would be a good idea to see the draft. I mean, this is, this has been going on for a while.
And offering the hearing. Yeah, I'd like to see the draft, but I don't...
That's fine, I'm not opposed to it, I was just trying to understand what...
I will second...
Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair of the House. Thank you so much, gentlemen, for coming in today.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Yeah.
Okay, lucky number 13. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Good morning, Commissioners. Holly Harris, I'm here for this agenda item as the Crisis Program Manager.
And my name is Kim Bohm and I'm the Administrative Analyst at the Stabilization Center.
So, for a side note, for all the data that you guys asked...
Oh, those numbers, yes, there we go.
All Kim and our data analytics team, so just acknowledgement there.
Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
I know, it's like, how many people have been to the stabilization center? How many homeless and how many children and, yes.
And it is, you're helping tell an amazing story.
Thank you.
So we're here today to request board signature of Allied Universal Security Document 2022-870. So as you may remember, we've had security at the Stabilization Center, I think, 24/7, at least since October of 2020. At that time, we were unable to find a local provider and so we contracted with someone from out of state. They, like everyone else in the world, is having staffing shortages and ultimately terminated our contract as, or just chose not to renew our contract. So we went out for an RFP and actually found a local provider out of Redmond, which we're very, very excited about because that just really allows us the flexibility to adjust staffing needs as, much easier than when you're out of state. And so we're really excited about this new opportunity. So far, it's been a wonderful collaboration and we're here today to get the contract finalized.
There isn't a gap right now.
No.
Okay.
We did a temporary solution. So we were fortunate in that the security guards that were part of the original contract liked working for us, liked, they were part of our team at this point and were willing to go through a temporary, temp agency to continue the work while we worked out the RFP process. The company is working with them now to continue there.
Great.
So we're very excited about that as well.
Oh, my gosh, good news. Yeah.
I know.
It's, how sweet is that?
I know.
It reminds me of the, it reminds me of the Deschutes On-Site Clinic, where we liked the care providers, even through the transition of the contractor.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So this is for a year and a half now?
Yes, just because of the timing and then we'll, you know, we'll hope to renew it.
So then is 250 the total amount or is it 12-month amount? 250,000?
The total amount.
Okay, yeah. Because it says annual value or total payment, so I, yep. And it's already in your budget. There we go. I'm supportive.
And I don't have any further questions.
Yeah.
Okay, could we have a motion then?
I'll move approval of board signature of document number 2022-870, a contract with Allied Universal Security for the provision of private security services at the Deschutes County Stabilization Center.
And I will second it.
Any further discussion? Mr. Chang?
Yes.
Mr. DeBonne?
Yes.
And the Chair of the House, and thank you, Kimberly.
And thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, good to see you.
Yes.
Get the next one.
Yes. Very nice. Okay, we're at number 14.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, my name's Nathaniel Miller and I'm Associate Planner with the Planning Division. Joining me today is Jacob Ripper, Principal Planner. The item before you this morning is to consider hearing, a hearing of an appeal by a hearings officer decision for a commercial activity in conjunction with farm use. The commercial activity is a proposed meadery or honey winery. The application file numbers are 247-22-000024-CU and 22-025SP. The appeal file numbers are 247-22-000757-A and 22-914-A. Commissioners, I'm going to initiate a short slideshow to present the property and the proposal. The subject property is located at 68540 Highway 20 and is just southeast of the city of Sisters. The Highway 20 borders...
Just for clarity, so the goal is to consider hearing this appeal at the board level, correct? I mean, that's what we're doing here right now.
That is correct, yes.
Making sure...
The appeal of a hearings officer decision for a commercial activity in conjunction with farm use.
Thank you.
Sure. The property is approximately 84 acres in size and is within exclusive farm use zone. Property is developed with a single-family dwelling and farm structures on the south end with gated passures to the west, north, and east. The proposed meadery would be approximately two acres in area and be located on the southwest side of the subject property bordering Highway 20. The meadery would be centralized around the winery building, which is a 3,000-square-foot existing farm structure located on the south side of the property, closest to Highway 20, as depicted on the image of your screen now. The proposed meadery would be comprised of three distinct aspects, mead production, winery operations, and winery-related events. As outlined in the staff decision, mead production is identified and reviewed as farm crop processing. The winery operations and winery-related events are identified and reviewed under the provisions for a commercial activity in conjunction with farm use. Some background on the appeal and the hearings officer decision. The Planning Division approved the conditional use permit and site plan review request for the meadery and an administrative decision was issued on September 7th. An appeal was filed on September 19th by Central Oregon Land Watch to that decision requesting a public hearing. The initial public hearing before the hearings officer was on Wednesday, October 26th. The hearings officer issued a decision on November 18th, which denied the proposal. The hearings officer denied the proposal on the basis that the application failed to satisfy the standard for a commercial activity in conjunction with farm use to demonstrate that the meadery use will be incidental and subordinate to the farm use. These standards are outlined in Deschutes County Code 1816030E and it also incorporates relevant case law. The hearings officer also denied the proposal on the grounds that it failed to meet the standards of Deschutes County Code 1816040A 1 and 2. These standards are addressed through a farm impacts test. The hearings officer acknowledged that while the applicant outlined the farm uses around the property, the application materials failed to show how the meadery would not impact specific farm practices.
Can you unpack the, sorry, go back though, if you, it's here.
Yeah.
Can you unpack the incidental and subordinate, maybe you're about to do this. But, you know, I'm, you know, you know, production of honey, production of honey wine from honey is clearly associated with farm activity. So I'm trying to understand why that's, you know, what makes that not incidental and subordinate, even if it's related to agricultural activity.
Yeah, it's a great question. So the incidental and subordinate rule is a part of a four-pronged test that's part of associated case law, associated with the Friends of Yam Hill County and Yam Hill County. And this is actually reviewed under our code and we incorporate that in our decision under 1816030E. And basically we use that four-pronged test and there's, this is one of the four, where you need to demonstrate that what's being proposed is not gonna overtake the farm use on the property. Otherwise, you know, stated, the income, one way you look at this is that the income generated from these commercial activities is not gonna overshadow the farm use, the income on the, for the farm use on the property.
And then, and then there's kind of dollar measures associated with that.
So there's room to kind of evaluate a proposal on a number of different fronts. I just use the income as just an example.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So one appeal was made in opposition to the hearings officer's decision. The appeal was filed by the applicant, John Herman, who requests a limited de novo from the Board of County Commissioners. In his notice of appeal, Mr. Herman outlines three issue areas that he believes needs to be addressed in a limited de novo review. These three issue areas are outlined in my staff memo and I'll also state them here. So the first one is whether the hearings officer aired in finding that the applicant did not demonstrate that the meadery use will be incidental to the farm use on the property, whether the hearings officer aired in finding that the applicant did not fully satisfy the requirements of the farm impacts test, and third and lastly, whether the applicant and subject property are currently engaged in farm activities with the intent to make profit in money. As for staff recommendations, if the board decides to hear the appeal, staff recommends a de novo review, which allows the board to consider the entire record and include any new evidence and testimony as you would see appropriate. Staff would note that this application could be appealed to Luba and because the basis of denial involves case law related to Oregon revised statutes, the board may not be given deference with respect to the farm impacts test or the case law surrounding incidental and subordinate. Commissioners, in your packets are three orders. One to hear the proposal and appeals de novo, one to hear limited de novo, and one to decline to hear. Staff is prepared to answer any questions you may have.
Well, on the one hand, if we're not going to be given deference on the interpretations of state law, then that is, that is a good reason not to hear the, the, hear the appeal. But, yeah, I, the relationship of these activities to farming and adjacent farm uses, I think, are actually, I have a lot of questions about this. I mean, in terms of farm impacts, you know, having, we have a desperate need for honeybees nationally to support agriculture. So, you know, to consider, to consider, you know, a honeybee operation as a negative impact. And I understand that, you know, it's the, it's the meadery side, maybe, that's considered a negative impact. But, you know, thinking about the impact of this particular kind of agricultural operation on the area, it's pretty complicated. And I mean, the, the questions of, you know, incidental and subordinate use, it's, I would, it's hard to... In other parts of the state where people grow grapes and then they make wine, I mean, it doesn't seem like there's a whole lot of questions or uncertainty about the appropriateness of that as a land use, as an agricultural land use. So... So, you know, I'm trying to wrap my head around why this is different. You know, basically, the land is being used through bees to make honey, and then you make wine from the honey. So, I mean, how is that different than growing grapes and making wine? I guess one question I would ask is if, you know, this, if this was an application to do that, you know, same site, grow 15 acres of grapes, produce wine from that, would we see the same kinds of challenges? Or would people not even blink at this application? And that's, maybe that's speculative, but I'd be curious to hear if you have any, if CDD has any thoughts on that.
Good afternoon, or still morning, good morning, Commissioner, is it afternoon? It's afternoon, good afternoon, Commissioners. Your planning manager, Will Groves. So, this is a great question. This, originally, wineries were put in the commercial activity in conjunction with farm use lane. And then, following a case called Craven, the legislature adopted special winery provisions. So, it recognized that wineries have a special role in our society in that not only do they regularly turn grapes into alcohol, but they also are a place where people go to celebrate, have weddings, those sorts of things. And there's always a concern when you're protecting agricultural lands that, as Luba so often says, the tail will start wagging the dog, and that the events will be a relatively minor component of a fairly intense land use that will then adversely impact the quality of the agricultural community. So, anytime that you have something that isn't strictly farming, which, you know, would be bees making honey, there's a question, is this thing that goes beyond that, you know, turning the honey into mead, is that enhancing the local agricultural opportunity more than it's harming it? And so, certainly for, you know, it seems pretty straightforward that, you know, creating, taking honey and turning it into mead is something that would generally enhance the local agricultural community. The question that comes up is then, when you start having events in association with this, you know, and it... I'll let Mr. Miller present a little bit here in just a moment on what the, you know, what if any was, anything was characterized as those additional activities associated with the meadery, and how those, in terms of traffic and other impacts, might degrade the farm, the quality of the farming in the area. So, if you might talk about those activities that they had discussed beyond turning honey into wine.
Yeah, certainly. So, the winery operations, the proposal was categorized, as I mentioned, into three different categories: mead production, winery operations, and winery-related events. And so, I don't know if I have time to see in the record there, but the different events are listed underneath those two categories of winery operations and winery-related events. So, starting at the first one there, I can kind of list off just maybe a few so you can kind of wrap around your head, your head around, you know, some of these different ideas that were proposed. So, under winery operations, the application materials indicated the applicant wants a meadery indoor tasting and wine sales area, an outside tasting area, a farm store, one food cart to go along with that, winery activities such as like wine tasting, wine club gatherings, bee pasture tours. So, those are some of the ideas they would like to kind of catalog underneath that aspect of winery operations. And then, they did want it to also have what they call winery-related events. Sorry, Commissioner Chang?
Yeah, no, I'm listening.
So, they're proposing events, concerts, and two additional food carts to go along with those winery-related events. However, is the intent of the applicant to keep those things limited, and so, they're only proposing 18 events annually, you know, and two live music events annually as well.
How many events annual?
Two live music events.
And then, what you said before that was?
So, just general events, they wanted to be able to have 18 events annually. Again, that would be underneath the rubric of winery-related events.
And what is a general event? I mean...
Is that a wedding?
I think you wanted to kind of leave it open to have certain, you know, opportunities to host, like wedding events. They also mentioned, you know, collaboration with other businesses in the area to help promote the farm and the mead production.
To give this a little context, I think what you're seeing at a state level is you're seeing a concern about how the commercial activity in conjunction farm use code is being used. When this was originally, if you look at the old case law, people are talking about grain silos or, you know, freezing facilities to turn chopped vegetables into, you know, something you might put in a freezer for a community. Obviously, you know, enhancing the agricultural product of the community. And what we've seen increasingly over time is these applications being used to conduct events or other types of tourism. And at a state level, we've seen cases bouncing back and forth, interested in if these really should be handled under the agritourism provisions, which allow commercial activities like this, you know, event activities to occur. I think you're seeing the interest from the opposition and the appeal. There's an interest to see, you know, some exploration at a state level if, in fact, these types of uses are commercial activities in conjunction with farm use or in fact that they really should be categorized in the agritourism lane where there's specific approvals for events and how many you can have and the setup and how that works in relationship to your agricultural activity. In your consideration whether to hear this appeal, I think there's two important things to think about. The first would be, you know, to what extent you might get deference on your ruling. And because this is a matter of state law, that may be relatively limited. The second, and why the applicant typically, and I, you know, I'm not the applicant's attorney, but why the applicant would typically appeal this to the board and hope that you would engage with it would be a chance for them to, what I've heard called, pack their backpack for Luba. So, they came to a hearings officer and said, do we meet the rules? And the hearings officer said, you haven't shown that you have. And so, in the board choosing to engage with this, you're also providing an opportunity for the applicant to explain themselves better with regard specifically to how this might affect other farms in the area as well as the relative magnitude of the farm activity versus the commercial events.
And is that because the information that would come up in this, in this hearing of an appeal would actually be used there? Or just kind of this, help them sharpen their arguments before they go to Luba?
You know, what we've seen in prior cases is that applicants would typically, they've recognized that hearings officers found that they didn't meet their burden, and so, they would hope that the board would provide them an opportunity to provide more information and more arguments. You know, they might come back and say, hey, we understand the hearings officer was confused about what we were doing. Dear board, this actually, this all adds up. Here's how, here's some specific examples, here's some numbers, here's some more case law. I, you know, I can't tell you specifically what they'd be bringing forward to you, but again, they're coming to you in a kind of a two-pronged approach. One, to, you know, for your interpretation of law, again, which will have limited, would likely be have limited deference, you know, if it proceeds to Luba. And second, for them, an opportunity to either refine their proposal or provide additional information to try and remedy some of the hearings officer's concerns about their failure to demonstrate. For example, in the farm impacts test, when you've seen a hearings officer have concerns about farm impact, typically before the board or a board, the applicant would then come back with a detailed farm impacts analysis to say, there are 26 farms within a mile of us, they are A, B, C, D, you know, all the way to Z. They do this, the thing that we're going to do is not going to harm them because... And so, that level of information wasn't available to the hearings officer. And presumably, were the board to hear this, they could improve their burden of proof with that type of information.
And in the proceedings that happened with the hearings officer, Land Watch was the only entity to file comments?
That's correct.
And, but adjacent landowners were informed about this application?
Absolutely, so, yeah, so, we sent out notice, you know, per our procedures ordinance, and we noticed everybody within 250 feet. We did receive some general comments, but nothing, the only comments we got in opposition was from Central Oregon Land Watch.
But within 250 feet really isn't much of anything.
What's, sorry, Commissioner Dare, that was 750 feet.
Okay, 750, but that's even, you know, in that area, isn't it like leaving town or something?
It's just out of town.
Yeah, so, those properties are huge.
Well, yeah, I mean, it is a huge property, so...
The neighbors were notified.
It is a huge property, and so...
One on each side.
So, I can get you that information.
Okay, well, I just, you know, somebody's trying to survive in today's world.
Well, and I'd be supportive of hearing it with this information, knowing that they may be packing their bags for Luba, just a funny term. So, just, but it'd be good to hear about it.
Yeah.
And this is in support of the, you know, applicant wanting to proceed. As I say, hopefully, it's a good use of everybody's time. That's the other thing I worry about.
Yeah, I, part of my, part of why I'm warm to hearing it is just because I'm curious, but that's not necessarily a good reason to take up everybody's time if this is not, you know, if we're not going to get deference at Luba. But if this does help to bring forward a higher level of detail and different perspectives around this issue before they go to Luba, then there's some value in that as well. So, I'm, you know, I won't push super hard for it, but, you know, I'm interested in hearing this.
Well, so, the applicant is, the appellant, the person appealing now has officially asked for the board to hear it, and responding to that.
That's correct.
Yeah, so, I'm supportive of hearing it.
So, April 13th is the final date, final action. So, yeah, anyone that's trying to survive in today's world, I want to be supportive.
Okay.
But the applicant requested, requested that we hear it limited de novo, and staff's recommendation was just de novo. Is that, am I tracking that correctly?
I support de novo.
That is correct, Commissioner Chang.
Okay. Yeah, I would support that as well.
Yep, okay.
Okay, so... So, does someone want to make a motion then?
What was that? I already said what I wanted.
I know, but we just need to be official.
So moved.
Yep. Second.
Okay, who made it? Okay, Commissioner Chang?
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Mr. DeBonne?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. So, thank you.
And was that an okay motion?
That should suffice.
Okay, wow, we just saved three seconds.
I just wanted to add as well, we'll look to the new year, just get this on the calendar. But if you wanted to run, if the board wants to run a work session, we could adjust our hearing date as well. So, I guess I would wait to hear from you as the Commissioners just to see if you wanted to run a work session prior to that public hearing.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being part of our team. Okay, we're at item 15. Randy, we're-
Somebody wants to buy something.
Hi, Randy.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Randy McCall, Fleeton Equipment Manager with Deschutes County Road Department. I'm here today to seek approval to purchase a paint striping body from Mark Wright Lines Equipment Company in the amount of $608,850. This will be replacing our 24-year-old M&amp;B striping truck that we've used for a long time.
It's 24 years old?
Yeah.
Wow.
We rebuilt the striping equipment in 2013. Just, we were going to replace it, and we chose to rebuild it. It was a different time budget-wise, and we were able to stretch some more time out of it. But we have, we've hit that wall where the technology has just changed so much that it's time to upgrade. Another thing is this purchase will be done through a cooperative purchasing contract, and the name of that group is Byboard, which we are a member of.
Is the old, is it just the body of it, or a body and a chassis?
So, we purchased a chassis in fiscal year '22. It didn't arrive until just recently.
Okay.
That's why there's the lag in time between the two because of truck availability. So, we came to the board for that, and that was $172,896. So, we have that chassis, which is just the cab of the truck and the frame, and this will be all of the equipment that goes on it. So, it's a considerable investment for a striping truck, but it is a key piece of traffic safety equipment for us. And the advanced features on it, I mean, just one to note would be that the beads can be done. It's got two-stage beads where you can do layers of beads in different sizes, so it gives a different reflection quality. You know, there's just things that might be in our future with self-driving cars and, you know, different technologies that we're going to need to keep up with the changes.
I think it's a modern miracle how you can put so many miles of line down and not having it all wiggly, so... I mean, I just worry, I think, how does they do that? That's amazing.
When it's snowing out, I really love the white lines on the right side, so... And thank you for my snow sticks on for your road because they actually put them closer together, like on the curves and things. I appreciate that. How soon can we get this piece of equipment?
So, the truck would be delivered to them, and then it would probably be April, but we don't start until just after that. So, we plan on having it for our 2023 striping season.
Then are we selling a used striping truck to somebody else, or it'll be?
That is a discussion.
Yeah, okay, so, we don't know. And we do that for other jurisdictions also too, right? I mean, this truck is used for multiple jurisdictions on contract?
Yes.
Does, who else has a striping truck? City of Bend?
City of Bend?
Yep, okay.
Yeah, and they're actually replacing, or they're working on replacing theirs with basically the same type of truck that you're getting. So, City of Bend and us are the two municipal units.
Right.
I want to see how it's done someday.
Yeah, you should have me driving it. I'm sure the lights wouldn't be straight. Oh, gosh.
Are we ready for a motion?
Sure, motion please.
Move approval of document number 2022-978 to purchase a paint truck's striping body from Mark Wright Lines Equipment Company, Inc. in the amount of $608,850.
Document 987, I think you said it backwards, but I think you said 978, but just confirming.
Sorry, 987?
And I will second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Mr. DeBonne?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. Merry Christmas, Randy.
Yep, Merry Christmas. Thank you.
For this, and good luck, we need it for the striping. Okay, last item this afternoon, this morning, number 16, OHA Grant, Workforce Incentives Grant.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Holly Harris, and I'm here for this agenda item as the Acting Director of Behavioral Health. So, we, I am here today to request approval to apply for the OHA Workforce Incentives Grant. This is an opportunity that came to us. It's a non-competitive grant, we really just have to submit an application. And if we do so by December 30th, we would be awarded $625,286 for workforce recruitment and retention efforts for behavioral health providers. In addition to that, there's a separate bucket of money that's a part of this application. That is $257,930 allocated for Deschutes County for reimbursing us for clinical supervision costs. So, for employees that are coming to us that do not have their license yet, we provide clinical supervision so they can obtain their license, and this actually will help compensate us for that work that we've been doing for many years. So, the goals of this are really to increase access to services and culturally specific and culturally responsive services, to increase access in rural areas. So, we are specifically targeting our South County location for housing costs for employees that live and work in those areas. That was a specific call-out in the grant application. And then, we really are trying to recruit, you know, increase the number of people that are wanting to become behavioral health providers, so increasing training opportunities and that supervision support so that they want to stay. So, some of the things we are hoping to do with these funds is increase our tuition reimbursement program. Obviously, the county has a program already, but we would like to offer that in a more robust fashion. This would provide us the funds to be able to do that, particularly as it relates to staff wanting to become behavioral health, qualified mental health providers within the organization. It would also allow us to provide paid internships as well as provide stipends for staff who agree to supervise interns, which is quite a heavy lift and an increased workload for them. And then, it would also expand part-time opportunities that the county, that we would like to offer at Health Services because that has been something that we've heard repeatedly for staff leaving the workforce and wishing there were some part-time opportunities in certain circumstances where it met the programmatic need. So, there's some of the ideas, they are not fleshed out fully. We're still working with a- are still working with HR and legal around what, how that will all look and how that will play out, but this is simply to get approval to apply for these funds and then work out the details.
So Holly, there was, there was earlier OHA Workforce Incentives dollars?
That was a specific source, actually. And-
Or before that?
Even before that.
Yeah, and some of the money is, you know, the kind of, the last piece of it is currently being held at COIC?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it actually hasn't moved, has it? I thought they were waiting till the end of the month in order to know the least amount that we could send.
I will have to defer to others.
Because the number that came, the number that came through, they said, no, no, we're not doing that check yet. We're going to wait and see.
I'm sure we were waiting, I mean, because the funds, we had, we had the ability to expend them through December 30th, so we're probably, we're probably right in the middle of that.
But the money that, the remainder of which will be held at COIC after December 30th. How, like, the scope of this current grant opportunity, is it different? I mean, is it for different things or is it same things, new round?
So that, some of that's yet to be determined. There are, there is some overlap, for sure, because we were definitely looking at tuition reimbursement opportunities with the other funds as well. We'll have to be very careful because these are separate funds from separate entities for separate purposes, sort of, even though there's a lot of overlap. So tracking mechanisms will have to be clearly in place. But we are, with this grant, we can really leverage those funds, these funds, to do some really great work around recruitment and retention. It gives us the ability to really expand those efforts in a big way.
Right. And the thing I noticed in the staff memo, which you also mentioned, that was very interesting to me, was housing stipends. So this is an eligible use of these funds.
For rural areas.
Yeah. What do you think that looks like?
Yeah, that's, those are some of the details we need to work out with legal and HR around what, you know, we have to consider pay equity and all of this. And so it's actually quite complicated. But the idea is, is that, you know, in our South County location, as you all know, we have struggled with staffing. And so we often end up getting people that live in Bend that will commute to South County to provide services, but then when a position opens up in Bend, we lose them very quickly. The drive is a factor. So what this, these dollars are really intended to do is incentivize staff to both live and work in those communities by providing a housing stipend to incentivize that. And that would actually be pretty incredible for South County, because I think South County works best when it has its own community members providing those services to other community members. And you just really see increased retention for the folks that live there.
I mean, we have been having, you know, there's, there's been just a lot, well, there's been a lot of discussion about workforce housing for at least the two years that I've been here on the Board of Commissioners. And, you know, recently, the idea of employee, you know, like, what can we do to address, you know, housing as a barrier to people coming to work for us?
And leaving us.
Yeah, and people leaving us. And so I guess, yeah, I'm really excited to see that in the mix for this proposal. I'm also, I'm curious whether the, the funds that are going to be held at COIC from the earlier round of workforce incentives, whether those could also be used for housing-type purposes.
Sure, I believe they can. I think we're really, I think, come the first of the year and through the next couple of months after the first of the year, those are the discussions we really want to have around what's the best use of the funds to leverage, to leverage them in the best possible way and whether, you know, we want to, you know, it is a lot of money, but it's, and when you think about housing, I don't, you know, whether it'll be enough to do something meaningful and substantial, I don't know, and we'd have to really dig into that, or whether tuition reimbursement really is going to get us more bang for our buck in order in recruiting and retaining our own workforce, because with tuition reimbursements often come stay agreements, which can really be helpful for stability of staffing. So those are all the important pieces to discuss as these funds kind of get solidified.
Right, right. Because my impression was that the carryover from that first wave was, you know, it, for some reason, I'm thinking like $700,000 or $800,000.
So that sounds about right to me as well. It would, yeah, it's a substantial amount of money we're talking about, but in the big scheme of things with all the efforts that need to probably be addressed, what's the best bang for our buck?
Right, right, yeah.
We'd love to hear your ideas on that, all of you. I mean, so that's, that's all part of the discussion.
Well, I mean, we, we're hearing about really interesting employer-led, you know, housing efforts, or at least employer-supported housing efforts, you know, that Core Community Land Trust has a, is working arrangements with some local, local business employers who, that, that employer contributes $50,000 to Core Community Land Trust, and then that employer's employees have first dibs, you know, like, they bump to the top of the list for opportunities to purchase those affordable deed-restricted homes. So that's, you know, $50,000, it's not, that's not a big, it's not, it's not like building a multi-story apartment building, you know, which is, it's a much bigger cost. But, you know, there's, there's definitely, there's a lot of people thinking about ways that employers can participate in addressing this, you know, incredibly important bottleneck to recruiting and retaining employees. So I don't necessarily have a lot of ideas to offer, but I think there's a lot of interesting things to explore right now.
I move approval to apply for the OHA Workforce Incentives Grant in the amount of $883,216 to increase access to services, provide supervised clinical experience, increase training, and improve recruitment and retention for behavioral health care providers.
Second.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Devon?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair of Chiefs. Thank you, Holly. Thank you. We, sorry, we didn't do yours back-to-back. We just didn't catch that. We will, I'm sure we will next time, right? Okay, so I know you all joined the room because I caused a problem today and our meeting went a bit longer than it should have. So do we want to have like a 20-minute break or something? What do we want to do?
Yeah, 1:15.
About 45 minutes.
Well, anything.
Forty-five? Okay, but they're already here. Okay, how about till 1:30? Is that okay? That's, that's 30 minutes plus.
Or, or do we want to just power through right now?
Well, they're, they're here. Do you want to power through? Sure, why not?
Power through.
Good at powering through. All right.
A little early.
Can we go on to number one then, or 17, at 1:00 PM?
It's almost 1:00 PM.
I know. I know. When I saw you walk in, Lee, I thought, uh-oh. Yeah, we're six minutes early. What a deal.
Yeah, now you're early.
Yeah, this is great. It puts my life on time.
And then our second item, Debi Holcomb will be joining us, and I don't know that she's here quite yet.
So we can take a break for five minutes. Let's just do that.
Okay.
I'll go get a cookie or something.
Okay, we're taking a five-minute break.
Yeah, so Commissioner, sorry, you were, yeah.
No.
Okay, five-minute break then. Do you mind? Thank you, guys.
She's right on time.
Oh, my gosh. It's one o'clock somewhere. One oh three. Okay, let's reconvene our meeting. Deschutes County Board of County Commissioners at December twenty first, two thousand and twenty-two. Thank you, Lee. Thank you, Captain Bailey.
Good afternoon.
Good morning. Lee Randall, Deschutes County Facilities Department. And I have with me-
William Bailey, Patrol Captain for the Sheriff's Office.
So what we have before you this morning is, or this afternoon, sorry, is a, get to my notes, change order for, to construct secure parking adjacent to the Sheriff's Office existing secure parking. This proposal would be a change order to an existing contract with Skanska Building USA, who are building our adult parole and probation expansion. This particular parking expansion came out of our 2018 parking plan. We had three different kind of small parking expansions to kind of help ease the parking crunch around the edges on the campus. And this is the third one. So we've completed parking associated with the community service shop. And then, and then this will be, this will be the second expansion of parking. Additionally, the PNP expansion is going where Sheriff's Office had used secure parking in the past. And that, a portion of that parking is being, is part of the footprint of the expansion. And then the remainder is parking that going forward will be used by PNP staff for secure parking. So we had, this is budgeted for this fiscal year in Fund four sixty-three. And we're happy to answer any questions you may have about the project.
So did this just come up as an opportunity? I mean, how did this come about?
So which part the-
So this is, yeah, we have existing activities out there. We had this parking plan, and all of a sudden, we're gonna, we're gonna go do it.
Yeah, so we've been planning this for a while. Quite honestly, with our capacity for project management, it'd been a struggle to get this one-
Hmm, okay.
Get the, just the, the process put together for-
Yep.
-project development. We've actually had the, the permit available for probably close to six months. And it's just taken us a while to-
So we're just having our contractor do this project as part of the, since they're on site?
Correct.
Got it, yeah.
They've gotten quotes from their, from subcontractors who are already working on the site to complete the work. And it, and they're able to, to start if the board chooses to move-
Yeah, great.
I don't have any questions about this.
Okay, so, looks good. Is there a motion?
Go ahead.
I'll move approval of Chair's signature of document number two thousand and twenty-two dash nine nine one, change order to the adult parole and probation expansion project contract with Skanska USA Building Incorporated for construction of a secure parking lot expansion.
Second.
Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. So twenty-four secure spots. Thank you. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Gosh, that was about as timely as we could get, wasn't it? All right. Thank you, everyone, for taking such a short break. We're to item number eighteen.
Okay, again, Lee Randall with Facilities.
Good afternoon, Lee.
I'll let my team members introduce themselves.
Devi Holcomb, Community Justice.
Tanner Ward, Prolem Probation.
So I'll introduce the topic, and then I'll give Devi and Tanner opportunity to expand. So the adult parole and probation expansion is just over eight thousand square feet. And as part of that plan, originally, we had a shell space of just over a thousand feet that we were going to not fully finish, and that would be available for future use. The project planning goes back over three years, and of course, things can change in three years. And we're at the point now where there are some good reasons to go ahead and finish that area. One is the ability to do it at a lower cost than what it would be in the future. Second, as Devi will speak to, there's some opportunities for other partners on the campus to use that space. And then, and then finally, the, in terms of timeliness, the contractors on site, the subcontractors are there, and it's something we could complete now as part of the project. This, again, would be a change order to Skanska's existing contract. In terms of the cost of the square footage, it's a little under two hundred thou, or a little under two hundred dollars a square foot, which is pretty cost-effective in terms of finishing space. And so that's the proposal that we have before the board today. And I'll let Devi and Tanner speak as well.
Hmm.
Awesome. Well, thank you. It's really exciting to talk to you about this project, and I can't wait to invite you all out to see it. Skanska has been doing a fabulous job. Just first of all, they are active every single day. I think the packet indicates they're eighty percent done after only starting in June, really, which is pretty amazing. So things are moving along quite nicely, and we feel really good about, about our partnership and our communication, of course, with facilities as well. So in terms of this shell space, maybe just a couple of things to add to what Lee had said. The first is that we, we actually have funding and resources within the PNP budget to cover this cost, which I think is, is exciting. You may or may not recall that over the past four to five years, we've been kind of on this cost savings budgeting plan, kind of preparing for the short years, the lean years of which we expect to see a couple coming up. But we've really amassed a nice contingency. And knowing that this, you know, as, as Lee talked about, the planning process has been in place for three-plus years, we always kind of, you know, had a note, maybe that's something we could come in and support if necessary. So we were walking through the site a couple of months ago and just seeing that shell space and thinking, wait a minute, there are all, all the equipment's here, all the workers are here. We're really gonna leave this just hanging out there? What, what could we do? I mean, and immediately, all kinds of things sort of came up. I mean, not the least of which is talking to our behavioral health partners. We're actually doing some good work with them right now to kind of integrate better their forensic folks with our folks in terms of our mutual clients. If we could have space to free up to maybe have them come work on-site, I mean, what that might do for collaboration and timeliness of services would be awesome. So that just seemed like, what, what, what might it cost to kind of flesh this out? So what, the proposal we have, we think is kind of that best, that nexus of the least amount of work to make it as flexible as possible for still unknown future needs. But it's there. It's gonna be shelled out. There'll be a little kitchenette, a little bathroom, one office with four walls, and then a larger area for kind of cubicles, if that's what it comes to, or other kinds of work, depending on what that might be needed. So that's kind of the, the project and our request in a nutshell. Happy to talk with you about what that financing might look like, or does that harm us moving forward, or anything like that? But maybe before that, or unless you had a burning question, I would also just love Tanner to share a little bit about the, the project and what it's meaning to us, because he has been onsite every day, talking to people. It's really exciting.
Sure. So I cannot applaud Skanska enough and our property and facilities. Everything is just moving along. Well, I won't use word perfectly, but very well. When there is a hiccup, things get resolved immediately. They're very minimal for us and our staff to get over there and take a look at this, so we can culturally set a tone as we move into this new space that we've been looking for since I've worked there-
Mm-hmm.
-the last twenty years. We'll have some capacity to do all the things we've talked about statewide and in Deschutes County. So again, can't speak highly enough about Skanska and any need that is needed. They're like, hey, okay, we can make that change here. That's not gonna have a huge impact. We have great communication with Lee. He's like, yeah, that works for our team. We're having bi-weekly meetings. Everything is just going well in that space that we're talking about now. We're, we're saving all that time downstream that we would have to do these conversations downstream. And I think, again, covering the cost now is gonna be a lot cheaper, as we find in Deschutes County, than it will be a couple of years from now. So I would echo the support and the direction we're going, and also the many opportunities that space alone will allow us to have in the future.
Well, and if the project wasn't going as, as smooth, we wouldn't be able to talk about the tenant improve, or the final improvements for that room. So it's just, it's a function of that. So that's this wonderful opportunity.
So you've mentioned behavioral health forensic staff specifically as partners. Are there other, are there other uses for that, that space, or, you know, there are other users that you're picturing for that space? Or is that the primary?
That would, that's our first and primary one, because the need has already been established. The one thing that is important for partners in our space is kind of that safety and security and confidentiality concern. You know, there, it's a, it's a high-traffic area. A lot of stuff happens. I mean, you know, daily, there may be arrests or just things happening. It's actually very calm atmosphere by and large, but you know, just the, the, the type of activity and the clientele that are there make it really important that, first off, the folks, you know, like regular folks coming in on, off the street, maybe that's not something a population that we want to be mixing, certainly not folks who are serving children and minors. It's really important. So we're kind of, kind of limited. But health services and behavioral health services for adults, not just forensic, but some of their other stuff, may be areas that we explore in the future. Not to say there aren't be others. Can you think of anybody else immediately?
That's the immediate, there, we contract with private vendors sometimes. And so things like electronic monitoring, they're, they're a hard space to rent because of the client, our clientele going to some high-end places. So there's provider, treatment providers who may, who may get a better cost associated and have that command and control to walk our people down the hall and say, hey, here's a group room. So those are, would be some other entities that we would consider.
So Devi, you said you actually have a contingency fund that will be able to cover this cost-
Mm-hmm.
-with the one hundred and ninety-one thousand plus the design fee?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, we do.
Great.
And then on the design side, we have some contingency within the project fund. And so our plan at this point would be to split that fifteen thousand, nine hundred design fee with Community Justice.
Great, well.
All right. No further questions? I'll move approval of Chair's signature of document number two thousand and twenty-one dash nine nine three, change order number three to the Adult Parole and Probation Expansion Project Contract with Skanska USA Building Incorporated for interior finish of shell space.
And maybe it's a document number two thousand and twenty-two, being the end of the year here. And with that clarification, I'll second it.
Is it, is it two thousand and twenty-two?
Yes.
It would be, wouldn't it?
Right.
Okay.
Change motion.
Okay, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. It is amazing to only have three changes. I'm thinking about, like, a couple houses I built and how many change orders I had. That's pretty good, guys.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Great job, Lee.
Thank you.
Have a lovely time at the coast.
And it, the roof's on, and it's, is it enclosed windows?
Oh, yeah.
Is it heated?
It is temporarily heated.
Yeah, so, but it's a conditioned space now? Yep.
They've painted the inside, so when you go in, you see the paint and how it's gonna look.
Yeah, wonderful. Yep.
It's beautiful.
Okay.
All right. So let's see. I think we're at the last item, nineteen, Board selection and Chair for next year.
So I just gotta say, yesterday morning, we were sitting there, and Jim Fister said, congratulations, congratulations, and then condolences. So, I mean, that kind of brought a little bit of levity, this situation. You know, it was a long, hard election year, and, you know, it's an honor to work with both of you. And, yeah, I mean, I've been kind of, I don't know, stressed out, or it's just like super partisan, everything that we've been through the last year. But as I say, I mean, that's the three of us work together and do good things for the people of Deschutes County, so.
Yes, definitely. All right.
Well, I guess, uh, I would say that I would like to be the Chair next year. And that returning to the tradition of rotating the Chair would signify to me that we are serious on this Board of Commissioners about working together in a bipartisan way to solve the problems of our community.
Oh, I thought we were nonpartisan now. Okay. Well, it's an interesting time. Well, I'm happy to have Commissioner DeBonne serve as Chair next year. I, I guess I would feel more comfortable. So I would nominate Commissioner DeBonne for the Chair.
And I'll accept that. As I say, the, you know, it's a moment here right now, and, you know, I'm sensitive to that. But it's, yeah, more comfort for myself also, I guess. We're just gonna leave it at that.
I guess I'll just say that skipping my traditional rotation as Chair, I will take as a sign that my fellow Commissioners seek to limit my input on the agenda of the Board of Commissioners.
Your input is never limited.
That, oh, I, I don't have a whole lot of input on developing the agendas. That is the responsibility of the Chair.
No, I mean, Commissioner-
And I will also say that I will take it as a sign that my fellow Commissioners are trying to shut down my voice on the Commission. And I believe that that action demonstrates how entrenched partisanship continues on the Board of Commissioners. And it will force me to pursue my agenda through outside channels. That's-
I'm sorry-
If that's the way that has to be, then that's the way it'll have to be.
So I'm sorry that you've come to those conclusions, not the intention. You see my, my, my persona, my attitude. We're here for policy. We're here for the people. I want to open, and I want input. We do it all day with citizens. You're reading something into this that isn't even there. And that's why I wouldn't feel comfortable putting you in this Chair position, is because of that attitude. And that's, and I'm, I don't do that with an attitude on myself, but those are the facts.
Well,
We're all in this together. We're all Deschutes County citizens. We're all United States citizens in the state of Oregon.
I will make proposals, and they will be shut down without discussion. So if, if, if proposals were-
We're here for you.
So-
I'm here for you.
You know, things like, things like the tax foreclosed property.
Oh, well, so there's a different policy choice there.
I put out an idea.
And it wasn't supported?
And I put, yeah.
We said, let's bring it back today.
I get back, I refuse to, I refuse to consider that.
Oh, no. I think that was mentioned, we'd bring it back today.
What would demonstrate, what would demonstrate-
We don't need to demonstrate. We need the three of us to work together. We don't need to demonstrate.
Yeah, and for the three of us to work together, it will take an openness that has not existed.
Commissioner, if you remember, when you got elected, I tried to connect with you before you were sworn in, and there was not a lot of response. And I tried to connect like three different times.
Oh, no. I came, I came in to talk with you in your office. And that was initiated, initiated by me.
Well, as I say, we could have a restart here possibly, but whatever's happened, it's not real, yeah. So I got other items.
You can, you can complete, you can, you can finish.
I believe, we all know, we're serving a hun, two hundred and four thousand people in Deschutes County. Next year looks really impactful, and we know we have a housing issue in our county. We know we've got to keep our people working. We've got to, you know, take care of our homeless. There's a lot of really good things that I do believe that we work together on, so I would hope that next year would be more positive.
I will.
I know sitting here has been a very interesting seat for the last twelve months, and, you know-
As I say, I want to lighten it up a little bit. I, I mean, I'm stressed out, I'm stressed out a lot because of this dynamic. And I'd like to way move past it.
Yeah, well, to way move past it will take an openness to exploring ideas, seriously deliberating ideas that has not existed here.
Well.
So I'm clear in my values and where I'm coming from and why I do it. So then, then I have a clear answer sometimes on some of the ideas. So do you want to keep studying it until I say yes? I don't see value in that.
No, I, I'd like an open discussion about the, the merits of certain ideas and an actual understanding of what they mean and are before judgments are passed on ideas. You know, I'll give things by, I'll give the example of the, the, the energy planning effort that the Environmental Center is, is pursuing. That idea came up here. There was a, you know, don't want to do that. And, and-
I didn't say that.
From Commissioner DeBonne. Don't want to do that. And there was not, there were, there was not a, there was not a, gee, why would we want to do that or not want to do that? There was no discussion.
Let's look at the positive.
There was a, there was a closure.
Commissioner Chang, let's look at the positive. Oh, my gosh, the biomass plant. We never dreamed that was gonna happen. We thought the projects at our fairgrounds would maybe get funded, but the biomass plant is getting the funding. I know that might be another item for today. But I think there's a lot of good things that we have done the past year. And I know, I know our community really appreciates that we have been open and accessible to them for the last couple of years. A lot of governments haven't been, and I do believe that we really have tried our very best. So I really appreciate that about everyone on this board, understanding that and how important it is to allow our public to be part of our process. So I, I thank everyone for that. So does that mean, then, you wouldn't want to be the Vice Chair?
No, I would not want to be the Vice Chair, because the Vice Chair actually implies that, so at some point, you're going to be Chair, which I, I served- that, so, at some point, you're going to be chair, which I, I served in the vice chair role in my first year here. And it clearly is not a, um, it's clearly not an actual placeholder to become chair later on.
Okay, all right. So, well, the good news is, if you get to the vice chair, then you get to sit over there. So, you know. I'd say that's one of the benefits of being vice chair, especially if you're like me and wear contacts and you're sitting on that side. So, anyway.
So, I'm, I mean, I'm willing to take things farther. I mean, if, you know, the answer is no on some of this stuff, and if you wanna take more time to explain why you think it should be yes, I don't mind listening once in a while. And I'm open-minded, and I've got a pretty big wide view of the world, so, just my life experiences, not more or less than other people, but I'm just saying, I don't think I'm closed off from things. So, I'm available. I mean, I, yeah.
That is not, that is not the experience from this seat of the commission. And I think if you were to go back and watch recordings of our prior meetings, that is not the impression that people would get.
Well, we all have our-
See, but, see, I've been doing this for a while, and I've worked with other elected officials and other boards. And for me, for you to say that about me and my position, it just doesn't add up. It's like, you're coming in saying that I'm, I'm bad at what I'm doing, and I feel comfortable doing it, and I'm experienced doing it, and I've never gotten bad feedback before. So, how can you do that?
Saying that you're shutting me down without giving legitimate time to exploring things that I want to discuss. And that is my experience. I'm not saying you are bad at what you do. I am saying that you are shutting me, as your fellow commissioner, down.
So-
If you want to change that-
Win-win here today.
Well, no, I, I'm looking for-
I mean, you need to get to the vote, but if you wanna change that, then I would welcome it.
Okay, so let's vote for chair. Um, let's see, I made the motions, so the chair votes, Commissioner DeBonne. Commissioner DeBonne?
I'll second it or accept it.
Okay, you said you'd accept it, okay. Commissioner Chang?
No.
Okay. All right, so then, let's go to vice chair.
Well, and it's a shame, but with the dynamics, I'll nominate Commissioner Dare.
Vice chair means nothing.
Well, it does to me, 'cause I get to sit over there. I get to sit by Kim. Okay.
That's a really important role.
All right, okay, well, thank you. So, vice chair, then, Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Sure.
And the chair votes, the old chair votes yes. So, all right.
I got a couple other items.
Okay, other items?
Uh, so I'll start off here. There's a sponsorship request for the Sun River Lapine Economic Development Lunch, which is in April. So, it's just an email that came through. We could either be a, and we're already a big partner here, so we've traditionally maybe been a table sponsor. I'm not even sure how much it is, but it's, oh, yeah, five hundred dollars, so, there it is. Yeah, I was looking at the title sponsor, but yeah, five hundred dollar table sponsor, so this is next April.
Whitney, do you have something to add to it?
Um, just if the board would like to consider that sponsorship, staff wanted to connect with you and see if you'd be supportive of funding it out of Video Lottery, since that's where we fund Edco, and it probably would align with that.
Right down to it, that's fine. So, I mean, if we wanna formalize it, I was just bringing this as other items, but next April, sponsoring a table, Sun River Lapine Economic Development, the amount of five hundred dollars from Video Lottery is, must be suggested.
Is there an opportunity to be like, a bigger sponsor?
And that's why I was, so there's a supporting sponsor or title sponsor, so supporting at a thousand or title at fifteen hundred. So, I mean, I guess, supporting would be-
Can we get a table if we do the thousand?
Yeah. As I say, we're already there, we're already there.
As I read it, it looks like a table has six people per table, which is the five hundred dollars.
Yep.
I see, so a thousand would be twelve, and I know a lot of department heads often have an interest in attending this as well, so perhaps we-
So, two table sponsorships, 'cause we're basically already, we're already the pretty much biggest sponsor anyways, is the county. So, yeah, maybe that's a good position to be, is two tables.
Okay, two table sponsors, okay. That sounds fine to me.
So, I'll make that motion, out of Video Lottery.
I'd like to be the representative to SLED next, next year.
Oh, well, and that's fine, we can, yeah, we can talk about that in January. Uh, I was there, last meeting, I was out of town, I think, this last time, and then, I don't know when the next one is, but... How about we do all those together here in the next couple of weeks?
Okay, good.
But I, I kinda, I guess, you can, you can vote in support of that right now, without me, but I'd like to consider all of the committee assignments before we make investments like that. So, that would, that would mean, that would mean waiting until we do committee assignments in a couple of weeks.
I mean, so this, as I say, I don't know where you're coming from. I feel like you're trying to jockey for something, or tell us we're doing something wrong. I don't understand, you know?
I got to ask, when, when we did, when we did committee assignments two years ago, I got boxed out of a whole bunch of committee assignments, not necessarily by you, but with a very short list. And I'm pointing out that that is, uh, that is, that is also a sign of being marginalized on the Board of Commissioners.
See, and I worry that you, you do use that, like you're abused or a victim in this situation, because, I mean, I see you as an aggressive partisan with big ideas. So, for you to say that you're, you're marginalized, but to come on so strong on some of these topics, that's a dichotomy that I see here.
I'm, I'm the least partisan person on this Board of Commissioners.
Well, and I'm just saying, my perception, you make, you make me feel like you may be more partisan in, in, you know, wanting to expand the focus of government, and telling us how wrong we are, that we're not following you. So, I'm just trying to share with you, really, I mean, 'cause we don't. We're, you know, the quorum of the board is two of us, so we don't go after lunch to talk about this.
If I'm arguing for things, you may, you may take it personally, that I am trying to say that you're wrong.
Oh, I don't take it personally, you know, I can walk out of here whistling after this stuff.
You keep saying, you know, like, that I'm trying to tell you that you're wrong, so...
That wouldn't work for me.
Okay, so we were talking about a SLED sponsorship for two tables and the amount of a thousand dollars from Video Lottery, and I'll make that official motion.
Okay, and I'll second it.
And I'll say that I'd rather vote on this in a couple of weeks.
Okay, well, I, I think we wanna do it now. So, am I still the chair? Do I still call the vote? So, we have two votes for it, and one, Commissioner Chang, you're not voting at this moment?
I'll vote yes, exactly.
And the chair, the old chair will vote yes, and Commissioner Chang?
I'll abstain.
Okay, all right, so we can do that.
So-
Which other, other item?
I've got a couple things still. Economic, no, Eastern Oregon Counties Association, EOC, there was a meeting yesterday, and the proposal was to do an amicus brief for the Measure 114 gun legislate, or, um, item. And so, EOC, and it was pointed out that all the Eastern Oregon counties that are associated with it, the 114 failed, so it was not passed by any of the Eastern Oregon counties, including Deschutes County. You know, we were about nine hundred votes, so we were the closest by far. So, I'm just saying, I attended that meeting, and I did show support for this amicus brief. It's five thousand dollars expenditure, up to five thousand dollars that EOC may spend on that. And it's kinda the value of, what does this really mean? You know, are there, are there legal constitutional issues, yes or no? If it needs to be implemented, how is it gonna be implemented? So, as I say, indirectly through EOC, we're taking a legal position.
Yeah, my county, well, my old home was eighty percent against it, in Morro County. So, definitely, it, um, definitely, people on our side of the mountain were not very happy about it. Anything else?
There may be a request for our American Rescue Plan dollars from the city of Lapine to help find, uh, fill out the funds for the sidewalks on the east side of town. So, remember, there was discussion about getting that project going, getting it funded. Speaking to the city manager, he mentioned that there's still a need financially for that to, like, it's designed and planned, but not fully funded, so there, we may hear, hear about that.
What's your shortfall, do you know?
Like, three hundred and something thousand dollars, so it's... Yeah, it's not small potatoes, but...
Okay. Anything else?
I think that's it.
Mr. Chang?
I'll offer that letter up again, and you can-
Uh, so, what, the funds-
The letter is an individual sign-on choice, so...
Yeah. So, it's a legislative idea. I understand that, you know, the Multnomah County, is, is any other county qualified for that, or just Multnomah?
No, it's, if-
It's over six hundred and fifty thousand.
Threshold is six hundred and fifty thousand people.
Yeah.
The legislation would be about reducing that threshold.
To two hundred thousand?
Two hundred thousand.
And then, what's the vision for the dollars, anything specific?
Low-income housing for children.
Well, the three specific purposes are funds for housing placement and retention support services for youth and families with children, flexible rental assistance for housing placement for youth and families with children, or funds to develop new low-income housing that is affordable to youth and families with children with thirty percent or lower median family income. So, that's the way that the legislation is currently written, that, those are the eligible uses. That doesn't mean, I mean, a whole other approach to this would be to try to rewrite the legislation to broaden that, but-
So, the legislation, there's an LC existing already, legislative concept?
No, the, the, that is the legislation that Multnomah, Multnomah County got passed some years ago. So, that's, you know, to, to just change to two hundred thousand is a simple legislative change, changing the actual scope of what can be done with the money, that is a more complicated legislative change. And at this point, given how short the time is before the legislative session, I think, I think just dropping the threshold is, is the appropriate thing to try to do. And like I said, there's about twenty-five city councilors, school board members, park board members, COCC board members, library board members, who are signing on to this letter. So, you have the option to sign on individually, if you like.
Or to make it the position of Deschutes County as supporting the legislation.
Well, I think about what we heard yesterday, that the fact that Sun River was short, you know, they said they were short on their funding from the taxes, and it was, and I, so I said, "How much was it?" Well, it was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They were concerned, and making some conversations about this. Some, a lot of the properties who have been foreclosed upon in our county, our South County, and seeing, like the fire department in South County, they need every dollar they get. Maybe you would say they should up their levy, but they definitely could use that funding. They have a place for it. So, therefore, I'm, I'm not really sure that taking the money from them is such a good idea.
Here's, um, here's some information from the sales of those tax-foreclosed properties from 2019 and 2020. We can look together at what the Sun River Service District-
Can I get a sec? There's two-
There's, there's two, two copies, so you can pass, Commissioner DeBonne, the other page.
Okay, there's two pages?
Yeah, one is 2019, one is 2020.
Okay. It's nineteen and nineteen, here's 2020.
Got it. So, for example, um, in, where's the Sun River Service District?
Yeah, Cloverdale only had seven hundred and thirty-five dollars, okay, but they just raised our levy twice. We're South County.
The Sun River Service District, uh, might receive, you know, in, in example year 2020, the Sun River Service District might be due six thousand dollars of the total, just about five hundred thousand dollars of, uh, of tax-foreclosed property receipts. Now, the actual money that comes in that year and is distributed may not match up with the amount of tax-foreclosed property sales that year, so, I mean, it's, based on discussions with Christie, you know, I asked her about this, it's trending lower. So, there's the, you know, if there's five hundred thousand dollars of sales in a, in a year, we might only, we might only be collecting that year, you know, a couple hundred thousand.
But you see that Lapine is twenty thousand dollars distributed to them for 2020. So, they're definitely getting funds back, and it was seventeen thousand in nineteen. So, per population, they definitely have a big ask.
Yeah, I, you know, again, because I had to, I had to work on this outside of the county, I have only had a chance to call board members of the top eight or ten taxing districts in the county.
What do you mean, work outside the county?
Because the, the discussion on this, there, there was no openness to exploring this, this policy concept. I had to do all my work without the support of county staff to, to do the research and reach out to other taxing districts. So, basically, I did the staff work. And that is because when I brought this idea up at Board of Commissioners meetings multiple times in the past, it was immediately shut down.
So, would you like us to study it for a while longer, to get to a yes, a support position?
I'm just basically giving you the opportunity to sign the letter at this point, or not.
Today, or not?
Because the letter will be sent on Friday morning with the twenty-five or thirty sign-ons I've already collected, because legislative concepts need to be in to Salem in very short order for them to be considered during this legislative session. And I guess the other thing I-
You're not asking us to take a position at Deschutes County, you're just wondering if we wanna sign on to your letter.
The time is, you know, the-
Because that'll come up too, the legislative, if it gets a bill number, we'll be in a legislative, you know, lobbying call, and we'll ask, you know, our lobbying efforts to contact all of our legislators to show support for this, if it's supported.
And all of the, you know, the majorities of a number of city councils and boards of other kinds have already indicated support for this, so they'll be weighing in.
But did you ask Lapine?
The city of Lapine?
Yeah.
I did.
Are they signing?
Mayor Richard is signing.
Well, it's a lot of money for them, if they're worried about billing and hauling people and-
Well, no, I'm, I'm talking about the city of Lapine, not the-
Well, I'm talking about their fire department.
Yeah, I have not, again, I've only, you know, because I had to do all of the staff work myself, I've only had a chance to call a certain number of taxing districts. I started with the biggest, the ten, the ten largest.
Great. Yeah, I'm not supportive. You know, I, I think we should be providing more land for people, private property opportunities is the way that people have housing opportunities. Taking these dollars from foreclosed properties before it gets distributed to the districts kind of perturbs the system that's in place. So, then you have to wonder, well, didn't, how's our tax rate, you know, changing around, or going down, or how, why did this number get shaved off? So, I'd rather not see this. Let's keep it simple. Let's, you know, tax for, for the value of properties, provide great services for people. And then for housing, you know, we've, we've already do the tax increment financing without, without even being able to say no. So, the city of Ben took all kinds of taxes for their, their core district here. That's fine, that's the state law, but why put more state laws in place, taking more money from the local jurisdictions? So, as I say, I'm clear on my position. Should we talk about it more? I mean, you know, you're, you're, it's just amazing how-
That, that's fine. Now, that this deliberation, if we had been able to have a deliberation like this two months ago, I would have- I, I probably still would have talked to all the taxing districts.
Yeah.
But I would have at least.
Did I leave it unclear that I would be not supportive or supportive?
No, you, you, you were, you were very clear that you were not supportive, but you did not give any reasons and you did not give any time to discuss.
Oh, okay.
And you did not indicate any openness to discussing. And when all of these taxing, when this piece of legislation passes and when the, when the time comes for the county to, for the county to participate in discussing whether we want to exercise this option or not with all of the taxing districts, you can tell them you don't want to. And if they say that they do want to, then I hope that you're open to hearing that.
I think we have to look at the little ones. It's pretty, it's significant for the little ones. So. Yeah, the Sun River Service District has 25,000 on 2020. And if they were talking about 150,000, I'm sure they're going to notice missing 25,000. And then it was 22,000 in 19. So, you know, there's a, I noticed the parks people are covering the 60% of the Family Leave Act for their employees. But we've got people in Deschutes County that, and with the economy going the way it is, we clearly have to pay, we have to pay attention for them.
I mean, basically all of the taxing districts I've spoken to have said that the, the positive impact that these pooled funds targeted at these purposes could have outweigh for them the small slice of receipts from those tax foreclosed properties that they would otherwise, otherwise receive.
Well, I would love to see that as a discussion item at some of those boards. I mean, I, I don't, you know, you can.
The Bend City Council is going to discuss it tonight. And the, the Park and Rec District voted, they actually, you know, I didn't ask for, for bodies to approve this. I, I just, because, because the time is too short. I just asked for individual sign-ons, but they, they took it upon themselves to take a, you know, take a board position. So you can, you can, if you want to see them discuss it, it's happening in real time tonight.
Thank you. Any, any other items? We don't have executive today, I don't believe. No, we're good. Are we good?
We just have just two quick items, if, if I may.
Yes.
One, very quickly, we received news yesterday from the Oregon Department of Energy that our administrative costs for the Mount Bachelor biomass project will not be eligible. I reached out to John McLeod, as did Commissioner Chang. He replied this morning and said they're more than happy to work with us. So I think very good news as we go forward with coordination with Mount Bachelor on that project. And then Whitney just wants to provide just a quick, quick update and just to see if we have any direction on, on the Sisters Chamber request, but I'll defer to Whitney if I may.
Definitely. Thanks, Nick. As the board knows, you received amid your ask from the Sisters Chamber for Video Lottery funds. And staff just wanted to check in and see if the board would like staff from the chamber potentially to come in in the early part of 2023 to provide a presentation. And if you'd like to consider this for fiscal year 23, or if you'd prefer that we roll it into fiscal 24, Video Lottery Budget Prep, which will likely occur in February. Stephanie will be bringing that forward for you. So just kind of a logistical question that we don't need an answer to today, but if the board has a strong preference, we'll take that and respond back to the chamber and let them know what they can expect.
Well, I, I think a presentation would be appropriate. I did run into Mayor, Sisters Mayor this morning regarding that project they're doing where the $500,000 that we had allocated, they've been holding it in reserve and they're going to be using that funding. So I'd love to have them come in and give a presentation on that, if that's appropriate. And yesterday, going through the ARPA funding, I believe there was like 15.4 million dollars that we're watching. So it's good to know.
I, when we consider that, that Sisters Chamber request, I'd like us to kind of, I'd like a comparison between what they are, you know, kind of what they're asking for and how it's being paid for and what we're doing with the Sun River Chamber, just.
Staff can do that pretty easily.
Great. So.
And coming in to talk.
You want my opinion on the matter? You were looking at me. No, I'm looking forward to working with them. You know, it, it's a shame. So there's dynamics right now. The city council is not doing visitor centers slash tourism promotion through this organization. So their organization's kind of unfunded part of it, the city council unfunded part of it, I guess. And, you know, it's important to have a, a valid, strong Chamber of Commerce promoting business. So I mean, I really love what they're doing. I am hesitant to start paying for it and expect to pay for it long term. That's, that's the only thing I really worry about. But we'll have a great conversation about it with them. So that'll be good.
That's great. We'll coordinate with the chamber and let them know that, find a time they can come in to provide an informational presentation and let them know that we don't expect the board to make a funding decision during the time of that presentation. But it's something that we'll follow up on after the fact, if that sounds good. Thank you.
I'm so appreciative to having CASA, CASA here this morning and all the people that got to hear about that program. I'm really hoping that we can cover the other, what, 15% of foster kids that need a CASA representative.
Tried to recruit out of Tumalo for that one.
Well, yeah, I know. It's really, you know, between them, friends of the children, you know, there's a lot of kids out there that need some serious help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will do some social media.
Yes. Eric, Brian is going to be pushing out some social media on their presentation to you today. That should go out next week. So hopefully that gets some additional traction beyond the folks that were here and watching live stream today.
And we've, we've got, we have the dates of the training too. I think it's important for those to be available for people.
They provided us a lot of great resource information to assist with the creation of those posts. So we'll make sure to get that information out.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, meetings adjourned. Thank you, Stephanie.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Yes, Merry Christmas.